For April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abadamas.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on in our agenda, now we report on closed session confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, your council convened an open session at five thirty-one PM and after asserting there were no public comments adjourned to closed session at five thirty-two PM to address the matters agendized for closed session consideration. You concluded at six fifteen PM and with respect to reportable action for the agendized closed session matters, I will do a written report under the provisions of Government Code Section fifty-four ninety-seven point one. That would conclude my report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council?
No.
Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on in our agenda. So we are this evening at Proclamations and Presentations. First on order this evening is a proclamation on National Building Safety Month. Is there someone here to receive it? Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Good. City of American Canyon Proclamation, National Building Safety Month, whereas the City of American Canyon recognizes that our future depends on the growth and strength of safe homes, buildings, and infrastructure. And whereas safe buildings ensure high quality of life that protects us when disasters strike. And whereas building safety depends on the devotion of a committed professionals, public sector building officials, permit technicians, plan check engineers, civil engineers, building inspectors, code enforcement officers, planners, fire prevention officials, and private sector architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and construction industry support staff, and manufacturers who work year-round to ensure buildings are constructed in a safe as priority number one. And whereas, working together with the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together built environment experts at the local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal levels of government to create highest quality building codes. And whereas, modern building codes provide comfortable, energy-efficient environments that safeguard the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas National Building Safety Month reminds everyone that our largely unknown public safety protectors assure that buildings essential to our prosperity are safe, sustainable, and affordable. And whereas each year, people across our nation renew their commitment to building safety wherever they live and or work. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City of American Canyon joins the nation in recognizing the month of May twenty twenty-three as National Building Safety Month. Great. Mr. Cooper.
I forget the protocol. I've never been a recipient.
This is for you.
And we have a couple of people here that need to come in.
Well, they should join you.
Yes.
Will have comments?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for the work you do and your staff.
We'll be safe as usual.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Cooper, would you like to make a comment?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, and I'm very pleased on behalf of the Community Development Department and all of the people in the city that help keep our buildings safe. This is just something that I think all of us take for granted, and it's nice to be able to take a moment and just appreciate just the fortune we have in our safe buildings that we can count on day-to-day to live a fulfilled life. And we have a couple of people on our team that are here that I want to to embarrass. And we have others as well, but specifically I just want to start with Laura Wells. She's our permit technician. She's the air traffic controller for all the permits that come in. They get routed, they get tracked, and she contacts people. She makes sure that everything is taken care of. She herds the staff, and then it gets issued. So it's a very, very important role. She's also supported with a contract permit technician, Stacy Barker, and we're very excited to have her part of our team. We've had an enormous growth in permit activity, and the two of them do a lot of work with very few resources, and we're very proud of them. We also have Nicole Hall. She's one of the architects of our online permitting system, and she's constantly working on upgrading that and lending her support to the other departments to help them become efficient too with their online activities. And so we're very, very proud of her. She's also, much like Theresa Gilfus is, she's the TV controller for the Planning Commission meeting as well. And that's a very valuable service. Our permit technician team, we have Fred Savadra and Curtis Thibodeau. I constantly get people that call me and thank me for the great work they do. They're very efficient and fair, responsive. We have a new contract building official, Josh Anderson, and he's just been really great. He's here on site two to three days a week, and he's been a great new member of our team, and he's helping iron things out and really appreciate what he's doing there. William He, our senior planner, he plan check, reviews all the building permit applications and makes sure they comply with zoning standards. He's also very diligent in working with other departments and the applicants at collecting the fees that are needed in order to build the infrastructure to make all these buildings and our way of life possible. And then I also want to recognize Tiffany Ford, our permit, permit, our code enforcement officer. She's out there every day fixing problems, coming up with solutions, and providing a gentle hand to life's troubles. So I really appreciate our team. They do a great job for all of you in American Canyon and our business community, and just very proud of them. So thank you for this moment.
Well, thank you. Bravo. You know, I just think it doesn't take much for Well, just a picture. Doesn't take much to notice how much construction is going on in town. Wow. You guys are really, really busy.
There has been a hundred and fifty-five million dollars of activity in just the last twelve months.
A hundred and fifty-five million dollars. Wow. Okay, we're gonna get some pictures. Next in order of business is Let me get my pages in order here. National Volunteer Week, April sixteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Mayor Garcia, accepting the proclamation will be Adrian Pete and Cheryl Jackson-Pete. I don't know if they're here. I don't know them yet. Sorry.
Well, we'll proceed.
We can get it to them.
Yes. Okay.
Or there's other community volunteers in the audience that I can spot in a crowd, so.
Certainly are. Do you really want to receive the proclamation on behalf of? Nope. 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 Somebody's getting nuts. Let's proceed. City of American Canyon Proclamation, National Volunteer Week. Whereas the City of American Canyon recognizes April sixteenth through April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, as National Volunteer Week. And whereas our community partners and nonprofit organizations are essential to help us build a stronger community through volunteer projects and special events that help enhance our community's quality of life. And whereas we shine a light on the people who inspire us to serve, recognizing and thanking volunteers who lend their time, talent, and voice to make a difference within our community. And whereas volunteers empower others to take action, realizing their ability to make a difference and to be a force that transforms the world. And whereas we recognize and thank the following agencies for the continued support and dedication to our community. Community Action Napa Valley Food Bank, American Canyon Kiwanis Club, and American Canyon Emergency Food Pantry. The Napa Valley Community Organizations Active in Disasters, COAD. Innovative Health Solutions, American Canyon Boys and Girls Club, Napa Valley Unified School District, American Canyon Community Emergency Response Team, CERT. Holay Health, Harvest Free Will Baptist Church, Holy Family Baptist Church, Collaborative Care, Feeding It Forward, Parents Can. There's many more. Crosswalk Church, American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation, American Canyon Arts Foundation, American Canyon High School Key Club, American Canyon Lions Club, Serpent of the Most International of American Canyon, American Canyon Troop Support. BFW Post eleven twenty-three. Napa Junction PTA, Remax, American Canyon Orthodontics, American Canyon Pediatrics, Brian Merton Farmer Insurance, Boy Scout Troop Number Seventy-Sixty-Two, Cub Scout Troop Number Seventy-One Seventy-Eight, Jamison Humane, American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, Catholic Charities, and various individual volunteers. And whereas through their generosity of time, money, and in-kind services, many opportunities have been afforded to our community, including food and essential services distribution, community fundraising events, programs and services, community projects, and so much, much more. Therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Leon Garcia, on behalf of the City Council of American Canyon, encourage the community to show appreciation to our community partners and nonprofit organizations by recognizing April sixteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, as National Volunteer Week. Wow. Bravo. You know, that's something that's pretty much part of the culture and heart of American Canyon since people started living here, and it was kind of help-your-neighbor type of thing, and that is very much the spirit of American Canyon. And I hear that comment coming from people who don't live here, who had that experience of being here when an event was going on, said, wow. Yeah. It's from the heart. That's the value of this community. So I'll pass this down to the city clerk to forward it. Okay? Thank you. Next in order, proclamation, National Earth Day, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
That will be received by Janelle Selick.
Yeah, if you got your crew here, everybody come up forward. You know, I look at the, all of you out there at the podium, and I think, you know, what I was just reading in the proclamation, you represent that. Yeah, and what you do.
As does everybody else here.
Everybody else here. Yes. I see American Canyon Troop Support. Thank you, Cindy, for you, and the rest of you as well. National Earth Day, April twenty-second, City of American Canyon Proclamation, National Earth Day, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the global community faces extraordinary challenges such as environmental and climate change, food and water shortages, economic struggles, and global health issues. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth and opportunity. And whereas we are all caretakers of our planet and have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty and resources. And whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create positive environmental change to combat these global challenges. And whereas a sustainable environment can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer behavior changes. And whereas it is necessary to broaden the diversity of the environmental movement to achieve maximum success. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Leon Garcia, on behalf of the City, American Canyon City Council, hereby proclaim April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, as Earth Day, and encourage the people in American Canyon to combat changes in the environment, degradation, support green economic initiatives, and encourage others to undertake similar actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess that's you to go first. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Brent. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
You got comments, Janelle?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's get you a comment, and we'll take a picture. Comment? Yeah. So we'll get everybody gathered.
Well, thank you. Take a moment to introduce some folks here. These are some familiar faces, I'm sure. This is our education director, Joy Hilton, who's been a big part of behind-the-scenes work on a lot of our environmental and nature initiatives, Charlie Plummer, board member, Scott Thomason, past board member, still hanging on. We won't let him go. And Elmer Andre Manade, board member as well. So thank you guys for being here. And, you know, we're really excited to be unveiling some initiatives that really fit right in the theme of Earth Day. Of course, we have the big Earth Day event coming up on this Saturday. We encourage you all to attend. Starting with nine to ten this Saturday, City of American Canyon Parks and Rec is doing a trash cleanup volunteer effort, and then from ten to twelve, we have the main Earth Day event, which will take place at Wetlands and will include a variety of partners and stations and hands-on activities. I want to take a minute and give a shout-out to the Earth Day sponsor, Marin Clean Energy, and I'll give you just a quick rundown of some of the partners that are going to be there. It's going to be a really fun morning. So Recology American Canyon is having a recycling and composting station. Napa Valley Transit Authority will be there with their brand-new zero-emission bus fleet. So you'll get to see a demonstration bus. I believe I heard it has an eagle on the side of it or a butterfly. They're very beautiful. Napa County Resource Conservation District will be doing activities focused on our unique Napa River watershed. Napa Climate Now and Sierra Club will be focusing on everyday climate action. Napa Valley College will be having tables related to health and wellness. And the City of American Canyon Environmental Team will be doing organics recycling, and I believe that you'll be able to pick up a compost pail there on Saturday, right? Yeah, so the new compost pails that just came in, so you can come pick one up. And then City of American Canyon Parks and Rec is doing the volunteer project, and we are, ACCPF is providing nature art and FBI composting. And beyond that, we'll also have a preview of our new outdoor classroom called the Outdoor Connection. It actually just arrived yesterday, so we're really excited. It's here in American Canyon. Joy's working really hard on getting it all decked out with all the cool education amenities that we have planned for it, but it will be there. You'll be able to have a sneak peek and a walk-through, so we definitely want everyone to come check it out, come see the bus, come participate, and get inspired to take action and improve the climate and improve the earth. Beyond that, we are continuing to work on our watershed education and environmental programs, and we look forward to really just a great year of hands-on activities in the community, all related to nature and learning. One of the things that we really believe strongly about is the wave of future when it comes to environmentalism is engaging our youth. And so we have to get our youth connected with nature. We've worked really hard on screen time to green time initiatives. We believe that today's kids are tomorrow's environmental stewards, so that's a big focus of the work that we do in the community. So come on out and join us, and Joy, you want to say any few words about the mobile classroom or anything? She was out there in it all day today. It's amazing. It's going to be an amazing opportunity for our community to have hands-on learning. We're going to be doing a pop-up series on the trail focused towards adults because a lot of adults don't know how amazing the wetlands are and what a it's really a biodiversity hotspot, which there's only thirty-six on the entire planet. So it's really exciting to be able to bring that kind of information and learning out to our community. And then we have some possibilities of actually bringing it to the schools as well. So we are really excited, and it's beautiful, and it's going to be super fun. So come out and play with us.
Very good. Oh, I should probably note that I'm an ex-official board member.
Indeed, of course.
All right.
And original as well.
Yes, go back that far.
Yes, yes.
Well, why don't we line up for photo op? And you actually have a two-page.
Oh.
Because it's a very long list of people who support, which is a very good thing. Okay, we'll move on with our agenda now. Always good to recognize good work accomplished in American Canyon. Public comments on items not on closed session or open session agenda. Do we have any?
Yes, I have Hassan Katak.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Hassan. I'm here to speak to you guys about, well, bring it to the city's attention, how animal slaughtering shouldn't be happening, and like it should be illegal. We should make it illegal. What I've noticed is that they do suffer, and like in one of the religions, you're supposed to tell them something, and they're supposed to think, the animals are supposed to think that they're going to go to heaven, which to me it seems that it's not real. And although, and also it's supposed to make them feel like nothing is happening to them. But as soon as you try to slaughter them, they tremble and they scream, and even after the point that you slaughter them, they're trembling and they're, you know, in pain since you're cutting their nerves and stuff. I feel like it should be illegal that, it should be illegal to where animal slaughtering shouldn't happen ever again. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Public comment items not on the agenda.
That is my last in-person comment. I do have a comment online. Unless anyone else has anything here.
Good evening, Cindy Beederman. First, I wanted to give a shout-out to Councilmember Joseph. Thank you for reaching out to me. I appreciate that you acknowledged the email. Also, I'll put my other hat on. First one is Cindy Beederman, community. NCOE hat. I sent some of you guys a text. There was a segment on the news on Channel Four a couple of weeks ago regarding Spirit Horse and the connection. So I was able to bring Dr. Barbara Nimko down here to display Spirit Horse here. It's, you know, to me, we found it during the pandemic time, and it was very healing for my girls, you know. No more classroom or anything else. So NCOE, we run the community schools, court schools, one in Juvena Hall and what they call Camille Creek. So right now, they have brought, I think, between five and seven students down here on Fridays at nine-thirty. And the students come in, they learn chores, they learn to clean stables, they learn to groom the horses, and they bring somebody out there to give them an education piece. The day I was out there, they brought a vet tech out and was giving them like shock therapy to lessen the pain because a lot of the horses are second-hand horses. The impact that it's had on the students was more than we even thought it was going to be. So the news came in, they did a great story on it. Like I said, I sent some of you guys a video. If you're interested, I could send you another clip on it. But anyway, I just want to let you know, like I said, as a trustee in NCOE, I am bringing American Canyon to Napa one piece at a time.
Very good.
And it's been very impactful. So we have some other things in the works, but I just, that was, again, given the pandemic alone, just, you know, having the horses and like that are so healing. But we got students from Napa coming down here, and anyway, it's a great match. So thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for what you're doing out there as well. Any other, anybody else from the audience wanting to make a comment? Any item not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, Adrian Pete and Cheryl Jackson-Pete are here now. If, I recognize it's out of sequencing, but we've already read the proclamation for Volunteer Month, but if we'd like to present it to them and
Oh, they're going to receive it?
Go through that whole process, not rereading the proclamation, but
That's been done.
Now that they're here, we can give them the proclamation and go through all the pomp and circumstance.
Yeah, sure. All right. We've done, sorry, we read the proclamation already, but you're the individuals receiving the proclamation? Is that correct? All right, good. Yeah, let's get together out here. All right. I believe we had someone online?
Yes, I have Karina Servente.
Okay.
Karina, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Okay, great. So I'm actually doing my public comment from Community Park One. And so the kids are playing against Concord. And I wanted to give a shout-out to Director Felix Fernandez. He, I feel like he has gone above and beyond with all my bugging him. He, because of the rains, the dogouts had like about four inches of mud. And, you know, in reality, this park has, it needs so much work. But he brought his crew, put gravel in the dogouts. It's not a mess anymore. We tried to, you know, keep the grass down. And the, his crew has brought a truck and they dragged the field. And I had umpire But I was able to tell a couple of people from Concord where to go to have dinner. So it's bringing tax money to our, to our city, having all these visitors. So, you know, we got a, the more we take care of our parks and open space, the more visitors we have and more tax comes into, into our city. So a big thanks to Jason Holly and to Felix Fernandez for helping us and for always taking my calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another speaker online?
There is not.
Okay. Well, we'll close public comment on this matter at this point, and we'll move on with our agenda. Let's see, we have our consent calendar. Any agenda changes, council? If not, I'll accept the motion for consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, council. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close our public hearing and return to council for further discussion, desired action.
If there's no further discussion, desired act, well, the desired action is I want to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order. A resolution in the City Council of the City of American Canyon, authorizing the city manager to summarily vacate the 61,924 square feet, more or less, an easement for the purpose of constructing and maintaining the city's potable and reclaimed water storage tanks, being a portion of the lands of Edward F. Biggs and Charlotte L. Biggs, trustees of the Biggs Family Trust, dated August 12, 1986, and described by the deeds recorded on June 4, 2008, under document numbers 2008-0014217 and 2008-0014218, Napa County Records.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, council. Well, now move on to our second, Item 15, Speed Survey Update.
Good evening again. Yes, tonight, we are here to discuss the updated speed survey that was conducted in fall of 2022. Is this something that needs to be done on an annual basis, not annual basis, every five to 10 years, extend it out to 10 years as necessary? Let me forward the screen here. There we go. There's legal requirements, engineering traffic surveys, and then enforcement parts of this, this public hearing tonight. The legal requirements are the California Vehicle Code, and there's also within the report, assembly bills that were somewhere, like AB 321 was communicated and, or adopted by the state in 2008. And then more recently, AB 43 and AB 1938 in 21, 22, respectively, that allowed for further reductions if found by the engineering traffic calming measures, certain items in place, safety awareness, to reduce speeds further than what was found during the typical engineering and traffic surveys, which has been data-driven in the past with the prevailing speeds, the collision records, and other unapparent, self-apparent conditions on the roadway. The other aspect of a speed survey is the enforcement. This allows the police department to radar-enforce these speed surveys on city streets. If we don't maintain every five to 10 years or update it, they cannot enforce via radar. And usually it's your collectors and collectors and your arterials that are required. There's been questions about, one segment in particular was not included on our Collector Street, which is Melvin. And I'll get to that later in this, but it's considered a local road and does not require a speed survey update. The last speed survey that was completed was in 2016 and 17, was when the ordinance was update, updated. It also included, tagged some of the 2009 earlier surveys. The summary, the 2022, 2022 Engineering Traffic Survey Report, conducted by Farr and Peers, included 18 street segments in the city. There were 10 segments. The speeds will remain the same. Eight segments will be reduced by five mil, or being proposed reduced by five miles per hour. In addition, there was three segments that were recommended for further speed reduction in the active school zones. This is during when there's children are present, typically school hours, you know, pickup and drop off, or any other time during the day when there's activity. And those were proposed on Benton Way, 15 mile per hour. There's a map up there showing these segments. Eucalyptus Drive, 25 miles per hour. And then Newell Drive, 25 miles per hour, where these zones otherwise would be normally their specified speed limits of 25 and/or 30 and 40, respectively. The segments that they studied are, hopefully everyone can read this, but you can see the map, that's more clear on where all the speed segments that were conducted this past fall by Farr and Peers. They also included some average daily traffic counts, which we haven't been collecting in the past. So it's nice to have the data that will help us with our engineering designs moving forward as far as reconstructing roads. I didn't touch on Melvin, but the reason why Melvin was not included in the speed survey because it qualifies as a definition by the state under CVC Code 40802, that the road is less, is 40 feet wide or less. It's not more than one mile, half, half a mile length, and there's only one traffic lane in each direction. And as everyone's aware, there's a stop sign, Casier. There is that short 15 mile per hour segment where it turns into James Road and did not need to be included in the survey. So I think that was a question of a council member that came up during this report view. Though, I have shared though that with our current design of the Melvin Road sidewalks, they are recommending a three-way stop at James and Wilson Way that will further slow down traffic on that 15 mile per hour curve at Wilson Way at the end of Melvin Road. So that will further enforce not being requiring a speed study, unless we want to just add it as to see how fast speed folks or traffic is going along there.
They're going very fast, some of them.
There's also going to be updated speed radar signs. We're working on replacing our radar signs. So we'll be able to track some of the speeds that are going out there and be able to enforce better and see how, we will help be able to have data collection from the smart signs that we'll be replacing as the old signs start going out and as we're recommended with projects. Not to just spend general fund money, but as we're doing street projects to upgrade those signs as necessary, as part of the CIP project and help capital, help capitalize those assets. So here's the first nine street segments that I hope can be read by everyone. Again, there's only eight street segments that are recommended to reduce. Those are your higher speed limits that are based on what they found in the field, traffic collision history. The report goes very thorough, the detail, and where they review the traffic incident history. And also the Farr and Peers was the one that completed the 2022 Complete Streets Assessment for the city, so they're able to incorporate some of those recommendations into the report and then tie it all nicely. As you can see on this one, the only recommendation for speed reductions is Eucalyptus Drive from Wetlands Edge Road to Donaldson from 35 to 30. And then you have West American Canyon Road from Wetlands Edge to James Road from 40 to 35. It's the latter streets such as Elliott Drive, recommendation to reducing it from 30 to 25. And then we have Newell Drive from 35 to 30. This is that whole stretch, and then across the school zones to 25. Phloes and Road to City Limits from 40 to 40, 45 to 40. And then American Canyon Road East from 45 to 40. That concludes my presentation. We do have Nicole Dudley, Lieutenant Dudley, here to answer any enforcement questions. And we also have Farr and Peers, I believe, on the line to answer any specific detailed questions regarding the traffic survey report and the recommendations they're bringing to council.
Well, thank you for the report. It's very informative. We have, let's see, who is, is that Councilmember Joseph, number two late? I thought Councilmember Oro beat me to the button.
I did, I did.
So I'll defer to Councilmember Oro because he punched the button first.
Yeah, quick finger. But not above or below the speed limit, I'll tell you that right now. So listen, thank you for the support. I always like looking at some support, and I think every year that this comes out, or every couple of years that we do these, we make improvements throughout the city. You mentioned something about James and Melvin stop sign. I, I'm in favor of that. I'm sure the locals would be too. People just turn that corner pretty fast, right? And I know we've done some reductions over there on the, on the other corner going towards James, and I think that's helped out a lot, but a stop sign would work there. We're going to get increased traffic there, and as part of that improvement, I'm just in favor of that, actually.
Well, and with the sidewalks, we're going to need crosswalks. So continuing that safe routes to school, and you're going to have people coming across the crosswalk within a blind corner, it's going to only just increase the need for a three-way stop at the intersection.
And then can you go back a couple of slides on, I think, the one with Benton Way? Nope, nope, with the speed limit signs, the speed limit recommendations? I noticed a discrepancy of number three. You have 25 and keep it at 25. The report mentions 15.
Within the school zone. So during hours of school or children present, because it's a high activity zone with the Aquatic Center, the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, but it's Wetlands Edge to Donaldson Way. Isn't that basically almost the school zone? I mean, you got Community Park, you also got the Boys and Girls Club. Where are you going to put the 15 and where are you going to keep the 25? I would argue that you would keep it Donaldson all the way to Wetlands Edge on Benton because that is, you've got the, you've got the Boys and Girls Club, the school zone, the Aquatic Center, and the middle school all the way through that.
So the 15 mile per hour zone, the signs haven't been assigned where they would go yet, but, so the, these are the ordinance. The 15 mile per hour zone is statute that the staff can implement with the recommendations we provided this evening. So those signs aren't being recommended for a night. They would be incorporated probably with the Benton rehabilitation that we're doing, hopefully by the summer of this year, pending the recycled water line completion. Because where we're doing the restriping, we're doing improvements at Chaucer Lane, the enhanced crosswalk with Benton, Cross Chaucer. So we align all those signs at that point in time when we're doing construction. It would be that whole segment, because once you come down from Elliott, you're entering that area, you'd need the speed zone to start sooner. But it's not going to be 24 hours, it's going to be during certain hours when children are present.
So why does it say 25 on here?
That's going to be your set speed limit regardless.
And so you're saying, you're saying that it stays at 25 except during certain hours, nine to five, or whatever it is, or when children are present.
When people are present, yeah. High, high activity is present.
Which is daylight hours. I got you.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, and I think everything else seems to be okay on that front. But that is a, we don't have a proper civic center here in American Canyon, but that, if there's a place of civic activity, it happens along that corridor.
And that was really highlighted in the report.
There's a lot of activity in that area and a lot of congested traffic.
And before I give up the mic, I don't know if you saw the comment that came in today that was very supportive of it from the Napa Bicycle Coalition?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure you saw that.
I forgot to mention that, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Joseph?
All right. Well, thank you for the report. I agree, this is kind of the exciting news of every five years, I guess, because traffic safety on local streets has become the real, real high priority, bless you. So I have a few questions. One, methodology. I mentioned to the city manager, there were some streets that the survey said the 85th percentile would push a speed from 30 to 35, but by applying these laws, they were able to actually reduce it to 25. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out, it sounds as if each law allows you to do a five mile per hour reduction. Does that mean you can apply both and get a 10 mile? Or how did you get to that? I'm not objecting to it, I'm just trying to figure out how you, how it worked out.
I'm going to defer to the consultants on this one because I also saw on that code about a 12.4 mile per hour reduction max, so I would defer to, I'm not sure which, Ashley.
I have Ashley, you should be able, Ashley, I hope you can hear us, but you are muted.
Yes, hello, everyone. So there are various laws that Erica, oh, there's a lot of me, that Erica mentioned on the slides. And there are many factors, whether it's AB 43, CVC, and also if the roadway was included on the local road safety plan or other pedestrian plans. Those are all combinations of factors that could lead to that further reduction in speeds.
Okay. Well, like I said, it's more a matter of curiosity for my sake, but I'm glad to see the, the speed limits that are being recommended. The next point would be, I would agree that Melvin ought to be included just because it is such a thoroughfare. It may be a local road, and I'm, you know, obviously it qualifies, but it isn't being treated as one. And we should be able to track it, if for no other reason, to monitor the volumes and see what happens as we build out 29 and Newell, to see ideally if the volumes on Melvin go down, because theoretically, people would use the other roads instead of a local one. So I'd recommend that we throw it in on the next cycle. And then in particular, big thanks for the reductions on Newell and on Elliott. Five years ago, there was a lot of concern about a resident who lived on Newell who thought it was crazy to bump the speed up to 35. And so I guess thanks to the new legislation, we're able to put it back down to 30. And she's not here tonight, but I'm sure she appreciates it. And there's another lady who, for several decades, we have had discussions about speeding on Elliott, and I didn't get a chance to reach out to her, but the good news is that speed has been reduced. I'm sure she will appreciate that. The follow-up will be that doesn't slow down anybody, but at least the speeds are different, and that's good. Couple of other things, in reviewing the report, what struck me when you showed the volumes on the various segments? Wetlands Edge between Eucalyptus and West American Canyon Road was the second lowest volume of traffic in all 18 segments, which just struck me as an interesting commentary, given, given all the effort we've put on traffic calming, that, that maybe it's actually reduced volumes of traffic altogether, who knows? But that just struck me as an interesting tidbit. Lastly, the report talks about traffic calming efforts and the need to focus on a number of streets. And it reminds me that we've got to bring back the traffic calming study because right off the bat, the segments that our consultants are recommending for traffic calming have never been brought up by our residents as a priority. And so it kind of reinforces the concern that we may be following the professionals' theory of traffic go down because theoretically people would use the other roads instead of a local one. So I'd recommend that we throw it in on the next cycle. And then in particular, uh, big thanks for the reductions on Newell and on Elliott. Uh, five years ago, uh, there was a lot of concern about a resident who lived on Newell who thought it was crazy to bump the speed up to 35. And so I guess thanks to the new legislation, uh, we're able to put it back down to 30. And she's not here tonight, but I'm sure she appreciates it. And there's another lady who, for several decades, uh, we have had discussions about speeding on Elliott and I didn't get a chance to reach out to her, but, um, the good news is that speed has been reduced. Uh, I'm sure she will appreciate that. The follow-up will be that doesn't slow down anybody, but at least the speeds are different and that's good. Couple of other things, I, in reviewing the report, what struck me when you showed the volumes on the various segments? Wetlands Edge, uh, between Eucliptus and West American Canyon Road was the second lowest volume of traffic in all 18 segments, which just struck me as an interesting commentary given, given all the effort we've put on traffic calming, that, that maybe it's actually reduced volumes of, of traffic altogether, who knows? But that just struck me as an interesting tidbit. Lastly, um, the report talks about traffic calming efforts and the need to focus on a number of, of streets. And it reminds me that we've got to bring back the traffic calming study because right off the bat, the segments that our consultants are recommending for traffic calming have never been brought up by our residents as a priority. And so it kind of reinforces the concern that we may be following the professionals' theory of traffic calming and totally alienate our residents who are saying, you know, you missed it by a mile. So to me, it, it reinforces the idea that we've got to bring it back for some dialogue and discussion and, and, you know, figuring out how we prioritize our limited resources. The last thing is a suggestion, cause one of the traffic calming segments is Kimberly from 29 all the way back to Meadow something. A suggestion, it is a very wide street. And so maybe we want to consider throwing in some grade four separated, uh, bike lanes that would narrow it a little bit, tend to slow it down, provide an amenity. If the Bike Coalition was here, they would probably say that's a great idea. So a little bit of pandering never hurt. But I, I do think it, it offers, um, it, it reinforces both our need to be more bike friendly as well as narrowing the street so it kind of slows things down. So, uh, those are my comments. In general, I was glad to see the, the outcome of the study. It, it seemed to address all the concerns we've had over the years. And so thank you very much.
I think the, appreciate the fact they're gonna be changing the, you call them radar signs, so it can track more, uh, activity there. Yeah, so, I'm, uh, well, as I mentioned many times before, I've been concerned with Melvin Road and the Cove Apartments going. And I really appreciate staff working on getting a sidewalk for that. Uh, but yeah, I think the three-way stop sign, certainly, uh, um, I see kids coming home from school and they're walking down what sidewalk they've got to walk on, and they cross over on that blind intersection, basically, and they're walking on turf till they get to another piece of sidewalk. So it's gonna be a great improvement in terms of safety. Thank you. Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, I, I had something in my notes that I forgot to bring up and it's a suggestion. Um, I don't know if we could do it in the future or now, or what kind of conversations that you have, but the speed on the highway needs to be slowed down too. And it's a gripe that, it's almost, it's criminal actually that people can drive through a town of 20,000 people at 55 miles an hour, right? Even in Lone Pine, California on Highway 395, they're doing 35 miles an hour through a town of 500 people. In Hopland, they're down to 25 and that's on 101, US Highway 101, uh, just south of Ukiah. There are places where people's, where Caltrans makes people slow down with far less density than we have here. And we have people going across the street to schools. And that needs to be addressed. I don't know if it, it's addressed in this way or if it's addressed in public works, but it's ongoing, uh, issue here that, that happens and, um, it really needs to be slowed down. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Oro. That has come up time or two before in our council discussions and, uh, I'm just wondering, uh, maybe Mr. Hawley, staff, et cetera, how do we pursue with, uh, Caltrans to get that reduced, speed reduction? It's just, uh, it's not a country road anymore, has not been for a very long time. And that needs to come down.
That's a good question, Mayor. Uh, as you alluded to, we don't have any control over the speed limit, it's something that the Department of Transportation, uh, decides. That said, we are engaged with them on, uh, a large project, uh, one that has a project initiation document. We've begun the environmental studies for improvements on the highway. So we have a dialogue going with Caltrans and, um, you know, I think we can probably initiate that conversation. We know when those projects are complete, particularly alternative to the roundabout alternative, uh, those will be designed, uh, the speeds of the roundabouts will be designed at probably 15 miles an hour or so. Um, the speed limits in between those roundabouts, my guess would be 35 is probably what you'll see, 30 to 35, kind of just my rough guess, but, um, that's, you know, still a ways away, right? You know, before, you know, when that happens. So, uh, now that we have a dialogue going with Caltrans, uh, maybe we can initiate that conversation to say, let's get people used to a lower speed, right? Because they're, uh, in the future, we get these projects done, these improvements done, they'll be going slower. So maybe there's a, uh, some idea about lowering it now just on the speed limit, just on signage alone and, and get them used to traveling slower. So we'll start that conversation with them and see what happens.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. I think maybe, uh, maybe it even involves eliciting support from our elected state representatives.
Yeah, and, and N V T A, I mean, something that's fair to bring up, uh, in our, in your capacity at, at N V T A as well.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I, I was just going to bring up the same issue that the roundabouts will probably address it. And then the other one is a, a very, you know, now we're going back 25 years, uh, the council before us, uh, had the same concern and worked with Caltrans and tried to bring down the speed. And I think one segment of, of the highway was bumped up five miles an hour. So, you know, sometimes, just as a cautionary tale, that sometimes Caltrans doesn't always act the way you'd expect them to, but, uh, I think what we're doing with the, with the 29 project will probably provide a long-term solution.
Yeah, I recognize that. I'm just thinking in the interim, that's gonna be quite, quite a few years out to get that project done. Okay. Uh, so this is a public hearing, any, uh, we'll open public hearing now? Anybody from the public wishing to comment?
Cindy Beederman, a community member. So I noticed, and maybe you could help me if I'm wrong, the, the recommendation for Eucliptus between Donaldson Way and Wetlands is from 35 to 30, but a portion of that is the school. So would that not automatically fall under the 25 for the schools and then 15? Okay, I just want to check on that. Thanks.
Any other public comment? We'll look to online.
I have no hands raised online.
Okay. If there's no public, uh, comment further on this one, I'll close public comment, we'll return to city council.
If there's no further comment, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order, a resolution in the city council of the City of American Canyon approving the 2022 engineering and traffic surveys and the speed limit recommendations therein and directing the city clerk to file the report with the Napa County Traffic Court.
I'll second. Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Abadamas?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Did she have to leave?
Okay, sorry, I, I didn't see that. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I think there's also, uh, an ordinance?
Is there an ordinance?
Yeah.
Dang it, thought I was keeping it straight. I'll make a motion on top ordinance Number 2023, next in order, an ordinance to the city council of the City of American Canyon, amending chapter 10.56, speed limits title 10, vehicles and traffic of the American Canyon Municipal Code.
I'll second that and to clarify that we want to waive the first reading and read by title only, don't we?
Did.
Okay.
I'm, you're my Roberts Rules of Order guy, so thank you.
Comes with the territory.
So roll call vote needed?
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. Moving on to our agenda, going now along to business items, that's item number 16, Parks and Recreation Department user fee schedule.
Alexandra Echada with Parks and Recreation Department. Um, we are here this evening to talk about the Parks and Recreation, um, Department user fees, um, Department user fees, excuse me. The Parks and Recreation Department expressed an interest in conducting a fee study. One, to determine the services, the service categories for the various programs and services we provide. Two, determine the cost recovery percentages for those services provided. Three, better understand the true and full cost of these services, also referred to as market rate as we move forward in this presentation. And four, develop and update the user fee schedule for our services. The city has not updated the Parks and Recreation Department's user fees since 2004 per Resolution 2004 dash 11. The fee study project was started in fiscal year 2019-20 with the combined efforts from city staff, the Parks and Community Services Commission and 100% Inc., which is a Parks and Recreation Consultant Group. In 2021, this project was put on hold due to the COVID-19 pandemic and it was picked back up in 2022. To put things into perspective, I thought I would just take us back in time to 2004. So that was 19 years ago and we've made a lot of great changes in the city since 19 years and a lot has changed in those 19 years. For instance, gas was a dollar fifty-nine a gallon, can you believe it? I think it's now up in the upwards of almost six dollars a gallon. A dollar was a dollar in 2004 and now it's a dollar fifty-nine for an item. Groceries, eggs went from a dollar forty-nine to four dollars and twenty-five cents. And yes, this is the US average, this is not California prices because I spent more than four dollars and thirty-three cents for a gallon of milk for my family and I buy two gallons. So it went from three dollars and twenty-three cents to four dollars and thirty-three cents. And then a loaf of bread was ninety-seven cents and it went to a dollar ninety. George W. Bush won his second term for the US presidency. Friends aired their final episode on NBC. The Boston Red Sox won their world, won a World Series since 1918, ending the Curse of the Bambino against the St. Louis Cardinals. And the New England Patriots won the Super Bowl 32 to 29 against the Carolina Panthers. So again, that was a long time ago, but those were some fun times. On December 8th, 2022, PCS reviewed, reviewed 16 service categories and a cost recovery pyramid, as you can see on the screen, that outlines and defines the cost recovery percentage rates for the services that we provide. Each service category was placed within the cost recovery pyramid model, defining the common language of terms and concepts related to pricing and setting the cost recovery percentages associated with each level of service. Each tier of the pyramid, one through five, is a level of service from the highest community benefit to a highly individual benefit. Tier number one, which is our high community benefit, which has a cost recovery rate of zero to 10%, is the foundation level of the pyramid and is the largest and encompasses those services, including programs and facilities that mostly benefit the community as a whole. Tier number two, which is the considerable community benefit from 25 to 50%, this is the second and smaller level of the pyramid, representing services that promote individuals' physical and mental well-being and many, um, and may begin to provide skill development. They are generally expected services at the beginner level. Tier number three is a balanced community individual benefit. The third level represents the services promoting individuals from, with physical and mental well-being and provides an intermediate level of skills and development. This level provides a balanced individual and community benefit, that is your middle tier. Tier four is mostly individual benefit. The fourth level represents specializing services, general for specific groups and those that may have a competitive focus. And tier number five is the smallest tier and represents the services that are fully individually based. And sometimes, in some cases, don't always align with our core mission. So what PCS did, um, and what we did, city staff and PCS on December 8th, is we took all 16 of their service categories and we stuck it in each of the, um, cost recovery model of where we felt what was mostly community, community-based, all the way up to individual-based. And then on February 9th, I know this is really scary, but it was a lot of work. Um, on February 9th, the PCS reviewed and discussed, um, and commented on our service fee comparison spreadsheet was, which is here before you. Column one, which is, um, gonna be our program costs per program per hour, so let me just take two steps back. These are all of our current programs and services that the Parks and Recreation Department currently offers, where we have a fee tied to it. So we have all of them outlined and then the details tells you how, what's involved in that program, like our swim lessons, our group swim lessons, they include eight 25-minute classes, um, and with a max enrollment of six students. Um, so the details are in there, it tells you like our rentals, we have a per hour rate, sometimes there's a minimum of a two-hour versus a three-hour, um, it just based off of what it is to, to, um, run that program. So column one, which is our program cost per participant per hour, um, which is actually, actually gonna be column three, the numbers in red. This was calculated by city staff and reflects the direct cost for each program and services that is, that are provided, um, to the community, either as a per participant or per hour rate. Each program or rental was calculated, including staff time, direct program costs, overhead, like administrative support, um, rental fees, like for some cases, we rent the gymnasium over at the middle school for some of our programs. Specifically for the community garden, we were able to actually understand what the true cost is of water that we spend each year and so that was allocated out. So it really, we tried to encompass any of those fees that are associated with that program to try to get a close to true cost program per participant per hour rate. Column two is our current 2004 fees. We have not raised our fees since 2004 and those are the, those are the fees that we're currently charging. Between column one and column two, as you can see the difference in what it costs to run these services versus what we are charging. So the column one is in red, column two is our current fees. Then we move into column three, which is our market rate. This is the full cost for the services provided. This was calculated by determining the total per program per hour rate and taking where we stuck those service categories into the pyramid model with the cost recovery rate at the highest percentage to get the market rate. Once we were better able to understand these three factors, the program costs, the current fees and the market rate, city staff surveyed 12 different surrounding organizations and their service fees and tried to see what they were charging for almost the same, um, programs. This cost benefit analysis, analysis assisted in determining the difference between the market rate and an affordable rate, which is what we're gonna refer to as a resident rate. After reviewing the market rate and comparing with the surrounding organizations, we had a few areas of concern as we've highlighted in pink. So we took the market rate and we really wanted to, again, like, understand that, that market rate, the, the true cost of what it was for a program and compare it against all the other organizations to really see if that was an affordable rate, our resident rate. And we've highlighted that those programs, we felt that it did not fall in line with other organizations. And that was a concern for us because the last thing we want to do is have a service, charge a rate that is not affordable or competitive, when we know that Benicia across the way provides the same program, the same experience for a lesser amount. We know in general that if we're gonna charge higher, our residents are gonna leave and go elsewhere. So that, we wanted to take that into consideration as we move forward in this process. Then we get into this lovely one. On March 9th, the PCS reviewed and commented on the Parks and Recreation Department's user fee worksheet up on the screen, which details the fees and charges for the services provided by the city to our customers. Columns one through five memorializes the work that was completed by PCS on February 9th and all that we have, that, and everything that we've talked about. So the program cost, the market rate, market rate percentage, current fees, cost recovery tier. And then we move into column six. Column six is the cost recovery percentage between the new resident rate in column seven and the direct program cost. So we wanted to know what our costs, if we were to set the new rates in column seven, if those were our true resident rates that we were gonna move forward with, we wanted to know what that cost recovery percentage was gonna be based off of what it actually costs for us to run that program. Column seven would be your new resident rate and this, what we, what we found is it's not a perfect science. It, all the other columns have some mathematical formula that we've tried to come up with a justification of how we got to where we are. Column seven isn't that. Column seven really reflects a lot of time and energy and thought by, um, several individuals, PCS, city staff, and also reviewing. and also reviewing outside organizations to see what would be a competitive and affordable rate for our residents. That is really a... It was a handcrafted approach. It does not have a mathematical formula. It really was, again, thoughtful approach, evaluating each program. That meeting, I will tell you, PCS went line by line through all of the programs and services that we went through, and we really thought and talked about each of the programs that we were providing and what would be an affordable rate, based off of what other organizations were charging, based off of our costs, the cost recovery rate, our market rate, and our current rates. And as well, I just want to highlight, column 7 is rounded up to the nearest dollar because administratively, it does help with our staff. Like if somebody comes down and wants to register in person and they pay cash, it's easier just to have a flat dollar rate versus having quarters and pennies and nickels. Column 8 is the percentage in the fee increase from the 2004 fees to the new proposed resident rates. Column 9 is the non-resident rates, and this reflects a 15% increase above the resident rate for programs and rentals and a dollar difference for drop-in programs. And column 10 is our nonprofit rate, which is specifically applied to facility rentals because they are organizations. It's not an individual use, it's an organizational use. So that's why they're only applied to facility rentals, and they are set at 25% below the resident rate. Also, some things to consider. So the resident rate, we really wanted to define what that is. So resident rates will only apply to American Canyon residents residing within the American Canyon city limits. Individuals claiming residency will be required to provide a valid identification at the time of registration, and residency may be claimed by the following of two ways. One, a California driver's license with an American Canyon residential address. Or two, a photo identification card with the individual's first and last name and a utility bill matching the individual's identification and the American Canyon's residential address. They only need to do this once. Once they're in our system, they are forever identified as American Canyon residents. Non-resident rates will only apply to anyone residing outside of the city of American Canyon city limits. Programs, classes, service, camps, fees, rentals will be priced at 15% above the resident rate, and drop-in programs will be $1 more than the resident rate. All fees will be rounded up to the nearest dollar. Nonprofit rates will only apply to American Canyon nonprofit organizations that have a valid State of California 501(c)(3) certificate. This benefit will only apply to facility rental fees and indicated on the Parks and Recreation Department's user fee schedule and set at 25% less than the resident rate. All other fees, all other facility rental rules and regulations and requirements will apply, including insurance and refundable deposits. Again, all fees are rounded up to the nearest dollar. And then nonprofit and community partners. American Canyon nonprofit organizations and community partners are encouraged to host, coordinate, and manage community-based events here in American Canyon for the residents at city parks and facilities. These community events provide a great community benefit, tier number one, within the cost recovery pyramid model, by enhancing our residents' quality of life, providing unique experiences that celebrate our community's cultural diversity, and showcasing our community's inclusivity. The city values these relationships and partnerships, and exchange the city will provide the city park or facility at no charge to the nonprofit organization or community partner, and all other community event rules and regulations and requirements will apply. And that really does come down, for instance, if we take Meet Me in the Streets, and they have food trucks and they have alcohol. We cannot supersede, like the state of California, we can't supersede alcohol beverage control. So what I mean, all other regulations apply. They will still be required to have health permits and permits to do certain things that are regulated by other entities that the city can't supersede. So our residential benefits, because I think that's important that we highlight that here. Seasonal registration. So we have three seasons of registration. We have our summer, we have our fall, and we have our winter and spring. With all of our registration seasons, we provide an exclusive resident registration process where only American Canyon residents can register during that time. So it's a sense of priority. So they do get priority registration. This really helps ensure that a lot of our American Canyon residents get into the classes and programs that they want, well before anybody else. And really, in particular, this is important with our swim lesson program. That is probably the one program that is heavily impacted, and we really want to make sure that we are serving the American Canyon residents first. And by the time that non-resident registration opens up, they're really just filling in available spots that other people have not taken. So it's really filling the class, making sure classes run, and making sure that our independent contract instructors continue to choose us as a provider because it is a business for them. So we want to make sure our classes run and that our classes are full. Scholarships. We partner with ACCPF. They are one of our biggest partners in our department, and they actually help us fund our scholarship program. We are able to offer about 60 scholarships a year. That's $6,000 worth of scholarships, and that can be renewed on a seasonal basis. Each season, an applicant can apply up to $100 if they meet the minimum requirements to get that scholarship. And again, the only commitment that we ask for them is they pay the $10 fee, so that way we know that they're committed and they're going to show up. Our application is in both English and Spanish. They can apply online. They can apply in person. And then once they apply, what we do is we apply that $100 to their account, and they can use it for any program or class that is offered through the Parks and Recreation Department. And it is used. So it's definitely a well-loved program, and we're super grateful for ACCPF and their partnership in that aspect. Park picnic rentals. This is very special. We have nine different park locations that you can actually have a park picnic rental at, and we only allow American Canyon residents to reserve our park picnic rentals. And the reason for that is because they go fast, and we want to make sure, again, that our residents have that opportunity. And then facility rentals. American Canyon residents have up to 12 months in advance to book their facility rental, and non-residents have six months in advance to book their rentals. That gives them a full six months before anybody else can rent any of our facilities. And then also, just on the community side of things, we do work closely with our nonprofits, and we try to book things out well ahead of time. So that way, like, for instance, the ham radio event that's taking place in June over at Silver Oak Park, that was booked a year in advance. Same with Juneteenth. Main Street Bark is completely booked out for June 19 this year, and so on and so forth. So we do have special things that we do with our residents and our community partners. And I'm ready for your questions. Thank you so much for your time today.
Actually, a lot of work went into this presentation. Thank you. Just for our council benefit, I had a lot of questions, so I sat down with Mr. Akina and had a nice conversation today, walking me through what this is all about. So I appreciate the work on it. I think something that's important to recognize, if you could put the slide up with the pyramid, what would be examples of what's in each one of those that we do in the community?
Yeah, so tier number one, like I said, is highly community benefit. That's really where we talked about our community partnerships and nonprofits, like Juneteenth, for instance. We work closely with the Arts Foundation, and since that event truly serves the community here in American Canyon, we don't charge them for the use of that park. And so that's where you will see, like, there's 0% cost recovery. There's other resources that are put into that, like park staff time of getting the park up and ready, Parks and Recreation staff time working directly with Brenda to make sure that she feels supported through this process, and other resources. There's many different things that we do for our community partners that aren't identified as a line item or an expense that is easy identifiable. And most of the time, it is just staff time. But that would be an example of tier number one. Tier number two is our facility pass and drop-in use. So that would be more for like the monitored areas, like our open gym passes, or open gym basketball, or rec swim. Tier number three, which would include rentals for affiliates, partners, community events. So that would be like Kewanee's Crab Feed. They serve this community, they give back to this community. We want to make sure that their rental rate is on the lower spectrum because we know at some form, the money that they raise at that event is going to come back to this community in some shape or form. So that would be tier number three. Tier number four is going to include more specialized programs and classes, like our camps, for beginner level, intermediate level, and some competition stuff. That includes like our lifeguard training for those type of certifications. And then tier number five is more of an individual base. That's me coming into the city wanting to throw a party for my son's birthday and doing a rental and using a city facility for that, or a park using the city facility to hold my own individual program. It also would be for if somebody were to come in, and we like to use the term of a mini bottle rock here in American Canyon. There is no community tie at all. They're literally coming in, they're using one of our facilities to make a profit, and then they leave. We want to make sure that we're adequately charging them for that service because there is normal wear and tear that they are going to be displaying on any of our facilities, and we want to make sure that we account for that. So that would be tier number five, because it's really truly individual-based.
Staff time attached to all those as well.
Correct. Yeah, so when we look at this stuff, like our privatized rentals and things like that, we're not quite there at tier number five. Like when you look at the cost recovery rates of where we're at, and I apologize, this spreadsheet is very small. But when you look at your handout that you have in front of you, that was in the packet, and you compare our current rate to the new rate, and the tier that it's in, which is in tier 5, when you look at rentals, for instance, we're going to take the recreation building, which is halfway down the page. We currently charge $27 per hour. We're proposing that we raise it to $40 per hour. That's a 64% cost recovery rate. That means we're only recovering 64% of the fees of what it takes to actually run that rental. Eventually, since it is private, it is a private, we would want it to be on the higher spectrum, almost at 100%. We wanted to go with an incremental approach at this point. We haven't raised our fees in 19 years, and we didn't want to just come in 19 years later and say, here's an increase of 100%. We know that over time, fees will go up incrementally, and we'll eventually get to that point. Again, a lot of thought. PCS really, both staff and PCS, really wanted to take that in consideration and understand that making it for 19 years and one adjustment most likely would not be the best approach. We wanted to go with that incremental approach and really be thoughtful on how we raised our fees over the next couple of years.
Yeah, I think that's something, obviously, is something we ought to be looking at annually in terms of Goff with that. Who is Mr. Altman? Okay, Vice Mayor Washington.
Thanks, Ally. I think that was a great presentation. And you may have mentioned it, and I might have missed it. I get the residential and the non-residential fees, but one group of people who are our biggest supporters are the staff. Does the staff get a discounted rate?
We don't have that right now. I know our Assistant City Manager is looking at trying to have an employee incentive. One of the main things, we put that on hold because we wanted to address this first. Our fees, again, they were on the lower spectrum, and we wanted to have this adjustment first before we move forward with adding any additional discounts to the programs and services.
I would probably be one of the biggest supporters and make sure, because we wouldn't have this if the staff didn't do what you guys are doing. So I appreciate what you guys all do, and that should be something considered. So thank you.
That's it. Goff is...
Oh, Speaker 3 is Oro.
Okay. Well, they're not even numbered. They're just labeled for, I think this is for Planning Commission or something.
I'm Andrew Goff tonight, yes.
So you can be Goff.
Oh, seven-foot of me.
You need to stand up on the chair. Otherwise, it doesn't count.
Maybe we could get these re-labeled, I think, on the other side. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Couple of questions here, and then a comment. What's the plan for incremental increases so that we can actually make this a true-up in the future? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Thank you. I appreciate that question. Part of the resolution, and that's in part of your packet this evening, is this would be part of our budget process on an annual basis. So moving forward, next fiscal year, we would want to raise our fees, and again, we would come up with another percentage. I'm not quite sure what that would look like at this point. But we did set it at the CPI. So it is indicated in the resolution that this would be an annual thing set at the CPI.
Yeah, I saw that on the CPI part, but do you anticipate... I mean, CPI was just to keep us going there, but do you anticipate, like, actually doing a wholesale revisit of this as well?
I do, because like I mentioned, like our facility rentals, like the recreation building at $27 now, moving up to $40 is only 64% cost recovery. Minimum in tier 5, I believe it was, if we wanted to do tier 5, it's 75 to 100%. So we at least want to meet the minimum threshold of 75%. So again, we would want to look at each of these programs individually and determine, okay, how can we get there without having a huge spike or increase?
Can you talk to us a little bit about how you and the commission approached non-residential rates? You know, I indicated, when I looked at it, I was like, eh, there could be probably a bigger gap there, meaning that non-residents could be paying more because the benefit really is for the residents of American Canyon. Can you just share a little bit of color of how you guys came to those rates?
Yeah, so part of the analysis process was reviewing the residential rates of what they were charging for the services and understanding what the, I guess, I'm going to call it the industry standard is for non-resident rates. And typically, it's about 10%. That was approached to PCS of having the 10%. They kind of had the same mindset. They felt that non-residents should pay a little bit more. We don't want to outprice our non-residents. Although, again, a lot of our programs are filled by our residents, there are several classes that are canceled because we just can't fill some of those classes. So if we were to make that gap larger, like if we were to make that fee higher than what it's set at 15%, I would be a little concerned because I would feel that would be a cost prohibit some of the residents that do participate in our classes from even participating. We would have to cancel a lot more classes. And that's the thing, we don't want to cancel classes. We understand that residents pay taxes. We understand that there needs to be a residential benefit. Industry standard is about 10% above the resident rate. We went with 15 because they had the same mindset. They just wanted to make sure that, again, residents had the priority. They pay taxes. It really is the benefit of this community. And non-residents who come in, they supplement those classes to make sure those classes are filled and ran.
And I know I asked this earlier in another section, but I want the public to hear. Do we have any indication of how... Go find it while I ask that question.
I have it. I'm ready for you.
How many people are non-residents participating in our programs and rental facilities?
Sure. So in CivicRec, we started CivicRec, our new registration software, in February 2022. Since then, we have 6,454 households registered in CivicRec. Of that 6,400, 3,911 of them are residents, so of the 6,000. And then 2,554 of those households are non-residents. From registration from February 2022 to present, we've had 5,267 registrations occur by American Canyon residents, and by non-residents, 2,951 registrations have taken place. Keep in mind, they can't do picnic reservations. So this really is like programs, and we just started rentals in January. So this really truly is program registration. And then in our swim lesson program, because that's really where it's impacted, and it really has nothing to do with residency or non-residency, we would love to offer more swim lessons, but we really need more staff. And this is something that, it's not unique to American Canyon. There is a lifeguard shortage nationwide. It's actually been a decrease over the last decade. And so right now, with just our swim lesson program in 2022, this past summer, 726 residents got into the program, and then 247 were non-residents out of all the swim lesson. And we had over 1,000 swim lesson opportunities. We did also check our waitlist because I felt that was important to review that as well. Of the waitlist, which we had 411 people on the waitlist, 165 of those were American Canyon residents, and 246 of those were non-residents.
So it sounds like we have a healthy dose of people that don't live in town participating in our program.
We do, but the great thing about our priority process with our registration and what I'm foreseeing, even with the registration that's occurring on Monday, our swim lesson program is going to be majoritely filled by our residents because they have those two weeks to register for summer classes before anybody else has an opportunity outside of American Canyon. And it's been about three weeks where people have been calling us nonstop, when is registration opening, when is registration opening? And now with the guide actually being mailed out to the households, it's kind of increased. And so we are anticipating that our swim lesson program will be 90% And so we are anticipating that our swim lesson program will be 90% full by the end of that two weeks with American Canyon residents enrolled in it.
Thank you. And then the final thing I have to say is a comment. The work that you guys did here is why the council loves our commissions. I can't imagine the hours that were put into this, line by line, the debate among five commissioners and staff and understanding that. And I want to say that as I look through this, it pained me to think about going through that work. So thank you for doing this work for us and making it easier and very thoughtful, right? I look at this, and it's a line by line. It makes an attempt to really weigh all the elements of how you price things out. And there's professionals and businesses that actually do pricing strategies. And they get paid pretty good bucks to do this. And we're doing it as a, you know, a stipend committee and some staff here. So thank you very much. Great presentation, great work from the commission. I want to thank everybody that is on that commission for the work, and it was the staff that was behind it. Good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, I want to more or less echo what Councilmember Oro just said, particularly the collaborative process between staff and the commission. A lot of, you know, it's kind of a philosophy I've been noticing in the last few years that, you know, the professional technical expertise of staff really need to be integrated with the community values that the commission can relate to. So, you know, you're going to get commissioner comments talking about, you know, let's take care of the residents that are taxpayers. Let's not charge too much and so forth. And it's that blending of technical and community values that I think you come up with the best product, and I think you've come up with one here. I also really like the pyramid model because I do think it provides kind of an intellectual framework to say, okay, it gives you some rationale to say, okay, how should we approach this? Because, you know, if you try to recover 100% of your costs, as you mentioned, you'd probably be sitting there with everybody walking away from you. So I really appreciate the approach that you guys went through and the model. A question on the CPI process and the truing up that Councilmember Oro is talking about. You know, one approach might be to say, hey, over the next three to five years, we're going to have increases that are a little better than CPIs because it's intentionally to kind of finish the realignment. And so that's something to consider as we go into implementation is maybe, you know, two or three points above CPI or something so that we get where we need to go. And then the last thing on rounding to the nearest dollar, which I have a certain OCD effect about rounding, so I appreciate that. But if you're at $3 and you add 20 cents, are you at $3? Are you at $4? Do you keep track of the 20 cents, and when you get to 50, it kicks over?
It really depends on what the cost of the program is. And thank you for your question because I think that's a valid point. We rounded up because, as you can see from the fees and the cost recovery rates of where we're at, from what it truly costs to what we're proposing to you this evening, we're still under, we're not meeting, we're not meeting our direct costs. So in this case, we're rounding up. If we get to a point, let's just say 15 years from now, and we're just doing basic minimal incremental fee increases just again, so we don't get into this position again where we're having to do these, have these high spikes and increases, that I think would be taken into consideration. Maybe we don't need to do the full dollar. Maybe we round down to $3. I think that's a fair point. I think that's something that should be considered.
Or I guess that brings me to the other question. Next year, if it's $3, I know you don't really want to go to cents, and I don't blame you.
We will be rounding up next year.
Fair. Yeah, like I said, in general, I really appreciate the report, the detail. I'll spend a few weeks poring over it at some point in time. But good approach, good methodology. Thank you for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think rounding whole numbers are much better than pocket change, having to handle that. Well, thank you for the report. It's, I compliment as well, I share that that is a phenomenal amount of work being done to the benefit of the community. And I just, I don't know how many headaches that created.
It was a lot of time, but I'm super grateful for the team behind us. It was definitely a collaborative approach, very thoughtful approach. And the PCS and staff have really, just over the last couple of years even, to get us to this point, it's, a lot of great work went into this project.
I just really think this effort from a team approach just really shows their value to American Canyon. I much appreciate it. I'd like to express my thanks and appreciation for all that work, to all of them. Thank you. All right, so any further questions from council at this point? Council ready for public comment? Public wishing, anybody in the public wishing to comment?
So we, we're not offering any free programs on here, but if somebody needs financial assistance, we have the scholarship program, which does help in those aspects that, for people that need that assistance, and they can apply as long as they qualify. But just in general, that's a great question. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none?
I have nothing online.
All right. Well, then we'll close public comment, return to council for further discussion, desired action.
If there's no other comment from my colleagues, I'd like to make a motion to make, to accept resolution number, it's no number, but it says 2023, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon amending the Parks and Recreation Department user fee scheduled to update and establish new user fees for the performance of various parks and recreation department services.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you for all the hard work on this. Good job.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, I would... I think all the cerebral heavy lifting in my brain would make me extremely tired.
Better to read the resolution.
Yeah. Okay. We're now moving on to annual communication report. Receive and file.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and community. My name is Jen Kanzenbeck. I'm the city's communications manager, and I'm here tonight to talk about our annual communications report. I don't know why I'm so nervous, but I'm shaking, so. No, I know, it's so silly. It's silly.
We'll be nice, okay?
Don't be mean to me, okay?
No, we won't.
All right, cool. Okay.
We appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
You do a great job. Thank you.
I appreciate the work that you do as well. Okay, now that we're done buttering each other up. Okay, so this report is a little bit different than last year. We're doing more of the presentation piece instead of just a bunch of numbers on a document. And the analytics that I'm going to cover are covering the calendar year of 2022. So first, the communications team consists of myself, one full-time person, and we have a part-time communications coordinator. And then we also have a public relations graphic design and communications support consultant, Treppi Smith. And we strive for the things that I say up there, and I can't read it. Basically, our goal is to create greater awareness of American Canyon's initiatives and services, to promote the community's participation in local government decision-making process, and to establish American Canyon as the place to live, work, and play. I feel like this mouse is not working for me. Okay. So this slide is probably the hardest for me to put together because trying to think about how we do what we do, I narrowed it down to three areas that we focus on for our approach. And the top of mind for everything that we do is our audience, and I'm going to talk about the audience in a few minutes. So our first area of focus is reputation. And what I mean by that is in everything that we're communicating, we're looking to tell the community and our visitors, all of our audience, the story about American Canyon and why things are happening. And also to make sure that people know about services, community engagement opportunities, and things like that. So to be successful in building trust with people, we need to be transparent. We need to be consistent in how we're communicating. And so we spend a lot of time trying to ensure that we do that. The reason that we want to do that is because we want to have a trusted and trusting and informed community, which equals better involvement in decision-making and increased understanding and a better connected community for all of us here at American Canyon. I always do this at the beginning, and then I calm down. So while attending the council's recent strategic goal session, we heard the council express the importance of connecting the benefits of projects and initiatives related to the city's overall growth trajectory. And as a result, our team's focus will be adding an additional lens to the work that we do to help tell the story of American Canyon and why it's a great place to live, work, and play. We've actually made some progress in those areas over this last year that I'm going to highlight later in the presentation, but we'll be ramping up those efforts in our future deliverables, so look forward to that. Also notably, I wanted to add in the area of transparency that being fiscally responsible is also something else in our values that are important to the whole city, actually. And so I just wanted to point out that the services that we provide come down to $11 a year for every member of our audience, which is pretty incredible. Okay, so then the second area is responsive. So probably one of our, it's one of our largest goals, is being reliable, being responsive, being known as someone that can be, or a team that can be counted on to find the information that you need. So through this lens, we're aiming for reliability, consistency, and inclusivity to the best that we can. So looking at things from a community member's perspective is critical for us. And even more so in the work that we're doing, we want to represent that perspective back to the departments that we work with and other organizational partners to help promote further understanding and engagement. Why am I not breathing? I'm sorry, you guys.
It's all right.
Okay. Today's my first day back from vacation, too. I think that's part of it. So throughout the year, we also participate in trainings, and we attend peer conferences to continue building our skill set and find new innovative opportunities throughout latest technology and learning from our peers. We also share our experiences and get to show off some things that we do here, which is also very cool, part of what we do. So another important aspect to being reliable is preparing and being ready to respond to the unplanned. And I'll talk more about urgent incidents later in the presentation. So our last area of collabora, is collaboration. And so as a team, we regularly meet with the departments within the city, our organizational partners, community partners, the regional public information group. We do a ton of conversations, meetings, and the goal with that is to plan and coordinate, basically to connect all the dots of all the different things that are happening so that we can streamline what we're communicating. As you all know, we only have a little bit of attention that we get from our audiences, especially now with all of the increased technology. So we want to maximize those opportunities, so we don't want to waste anything when we have those chances. So through those collaborations, we work through multiple planning increments. We have an annual, quarterly, monthly, and bi-weekly schedule that we're working from. And then to complement that planning and the meetings, we also use shared documents, and then we're constantly talking in between all of that. We talk a lot. We communicate a lot. So lastly, on the collaborative area is public engagement. So our team also supports with the city manager's office and all of the departments, the Citizens Academy and the high school version of the Citizens Academy, which are both critical to building relationships and increasing the understanding with members of our community. It's also critical in adding to our ambassador list of people that help us with our messaging throughout the year. Slide three. Okay. So our audience. So this heart, along with the "we heart everyone in Amcan" and "we love everything in Amcan", is full of all of the types of audience members that we're communicating to. So it's anywhere between residents, employees, neighbors, neighboring agencies, neighboring communities, businesses, residents. Oh, that's bigger word residents, smaller word residents, so all residents. Visitors, our school communities, all of our partners. As you know, the population for American Canyon is around 22,000 people. And American Canyon is a fairly young community with a median age of 37.6 years old. We're also a young community of 30 years old since incorporation. We're a very diverse community with all of the world's major religions and 38 languages spoken at home, including Filipino and Spanish, which is leading at around 30% each, last I checked, but those numbers change all the time. We also have a digitally savvy community. We have more than 94% of our population has computer and internet service. And I shouldn't say that they're digital savvy. I'm assuming they know how to use them. So there's that piece that maybe they don't know how to use it, and they have it. But they have it, and that's important. So also, you can see on this screen the ethnicity breakdown, which I know all of you are familiar with. We're very diverse here. Okay. So our toolbox, we have a lot of different tools that we use to do the work that we do. And the first area is our partners, which I've talked about a little bit already. Our jurisdictional, community, regional-based partners, our trusted messengers, which comes from our ambassador group from Citizens Academy alumni, and basically everyone, everyone in this room, our council, our commissioners, all of us, everyone is our partner. So the media is another tool for us. We don't have our own news source here in American Canyon, so we have the Napa Valley Register, and we also have the Vallejo Times Herald as our local media. So we obviously collaborate, maintain relationships with those sources, and we prepare talking points for staff and all of you, anyone that needs them, for different initiatives. And we also pitch stories to local and regional media sources as we're able to, and special publications like Parks and Recreation-type magazines, things like that. And then, of course, we issue press releases. So the remainder of the tools in our toolbox I'm going to talk about on following slides because I have some analytics to share in relation to those. Can you still hear me if I stand like this? Great. Okay. Okay. So our website, which is famously known as the Virtual City Hall, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but we are actually known all over California agencies for this website, and we get a lot of compliments on the work that we did during COVID, when we switched over from our old way of doing things to this, and to where we are now. So the Virtual City Hall is a one-stop shop for everything that people need from our city. And as I mentioned, we kind of transitioned, and we did that very quickly, obviously, with the pandemic. And so one of the things, I'm jumping to the end of my slide, that you'll see coming this year is some improvements to the website design to really transition into a permanent city, virtual city hall. So that will be very exciting for us. And last year, in 2022, we had more than 191,000 visits to our website. So a website is identified as a serious, series, serious, a serious request. A series of requests on the website from an individual identified user, so from one person within 30 minutes is a visit. So, sorry. That number was up, about 30,000 from the previous year. And then our most visited pages, you'll see listed there. I just did the top four. And it's no surprise, those are typically our top pages that are visited. There was one change this year that I think you'll be pleased with, and that was the meetings and agendas got added to this list, which is kind of exciting. It wasn't there before. So more people are interested in the meetings and agendas page and getting in and at least looking at it and probably watching, at least, so. And participating more through our e-comment tools and other features that have been added. Parks and Recreation, or the recreation page bumped up to the top this year, or this last year. And that was really the transition out of the pandemic, moving from the really community service, social service-type activities community service, social service type activities to back to recreation. So I think the community is really excited to see what's coming. Okay, and then to the right, you'll see, I just kind of noted here a translation tool that we have on our website. It's up on the top right of our website pages, all of the pages. You'll see very top corner, it says language. And so users are able to click on that and they can select any language that is possible. I don't know all of them, but there's a lot of them. And what that will do is it will translate all of the content on the page into that language. So on the pages, not every single page, we're working on it, but on most pages, you'll see at the top a message that says in Spanish and Filipino, like scroll down for this for more, like to see this language. And then when you scroll down, it tells them in that native language, the directions to use this translation tool. And it also tells them that, you know, we, we try the best we can to provide translation to our community, but we obviously only have, we don't, we don't speak all the languages. And so we kind of note that it's not perfect as the disclaimer, but it's a tool they can use and then also provide them a phone number that they can call where they can get connected with our staff to use the language line services and have a verbal conversation with translation in their language of choice. Okay, so another component to our website that's very important is our collaboration with the Laserfish program. And I'm, some of you may or may not have heard about that, but it's basically a program that automates receiving information, routing information. It's used for our public records. It's an amazing tool and we are using it across the city. All the departments collaborate into it. So the website is a big component of that. We're able to link, what we're, what we do is link directly to our public records in our web link sharing. So it eventually will cut down on public records requests and people will be able to find documents easier. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to be improving the site design and functionality. And as a part of that, we'll be adding some highlighting, I'm sorry, we'll be adding components. When I say that, I really mean buttons to our Virtual City Hall that will highlight living, working and playing to kind of help facilitate that messaging that is important to all of us. Okay, so then email. Our website is the base of our, well, it's intended to be the base of all of our communications. And so ideally, everything we communicate is going to be on the website. And then from there, we share out to all of these other tools. And so the first one is email, which is our digital communication platform. And we use a product called GovDelivery. So GovDelivery is, it's also the same product or company that provides our website and our agenda process, our agenda software that we use. And so we're able to kind of connect all of those pieces together, which helps streamline all of our work. Sorry, I just lost my place, I'm sorry. Okay, so one of the major benefits with GovDelivery besides that streamlining is that it provides a high level of security. And so when we're sending emails out through the system, we're getting a 97% delivery rate, which is pretty incredible. And then the majority of the emails that aren't being delivered are emails that are, there's typos in them, like Yahoo with one O instead of two, little things like that. So we go through every so often and clean those up, but a 97% deliverable is really great on any email. So especially when we're talking about the amount of subscribers that we have that I'll get to next. So the system has more than 30 subscriber topics within it at this time. And most of those are, it's the city manager's update, neighborhood watch updates, the around town update, agendas, notices, job announcements. There's a ton of different lists that people can subscribe to. And when they, the icon that you see on the left is on our homepage of our website. And so that's where people go to subscribe. And then the right-hand side, you'll see a pop-up box that comes up on our homepage that also prompts people to go sign up there as well. So when they go, they put in their email address and they're able to choose the, the options that they'd like to subscribe to. And they can also update their options for things that they don't want to get later on if they get bothered by what they're getting. So in 2022, we sent 355 emails and that was up from the previous year. We, I think it was 260 or something like that. So we just keep communicating more and more. So also talking about the email. Again, I kind of put the little icon there to really remind you that's where you go to subscribe, but everyone in this room is probably already subscribed. So in 2022, we had an increase in 14,416 subscribers. So we routinely, every month, we add the new water bill customers into our, our database. We also will integrate the Civic Rec customers that Ally spoke about a few moments ago. And so we're constantly pulling from other sources and business license database, like every database that we have, we're pulling all those together on a regular schedule. And so our subscription base increasing is consistent every year. We're always growing, so that's very good. So our total subscriptions that year was about 56,000 people. And then our engagement rate, which means engagement is defined as if, when someone opens the email or they click on a link within the email. So obviously you opened the email if you clicked on the link. So we're at a 70.5 engagement rate. That's really exciting because we continue to increase our, our engagement rate is increasing each year. And that means people are at least clicking. They might not be reading the whole thing, but they're at least, maybe they're opening to, I'm not sure, but they're opening it. So they're seeing something. The benchmark number that I added on the slide is GovDelivery, the program that we use, that's their benchmark for all accounts jurisdictions throughout their system. And so as you can see, the median across the country is 59% and the top 20, we're a part of, so that's really exciting. And then to the right, you'll see a graph that has the engagement rates month by month for the year. And it's pretty consistent. It's nice to see that there's not months that no one wants to hear from us. So another way that we know this engagement rate, I mean, that we know that people are engaging is because when we're sending out information, they're signing up for classes or they're responding to surveys or they're responding to go get, you know, to pick something up, a call to action that we've given them. So I did want to also add, when I researched the benchmark information from GovDelivery, our numbers and our numbers of on the engagement and the percentage of growth year after year and the number of subscribers continuing to grow overall, we're a model definition of a successful digital communication with this data. So that's really exciting, something that we can all be proud of. Okay, so we also work, we design print materials. So you can see here, I just pulled a few examples. There are hundreds of these. You see them in our newsletters and hopefully in your postcards that you receive and different things that we send out throughout the year. The first examples are postcards. You'll see up the top, the drought emergency postcard that we sent out to the community, kind of alerting people of the conditions that we were in, providing the QR code to get them back to the website to sign up for the portal, different opportunities for promoting our water conservation rebate programs. And below that, you'll see, we're inviting people to have, come have some fun with us with the magic of the season. Then over to the right, we have our monthly utility bill inserts. And so this isn't from this, this isn't from last year. I actually provided the example here of what you're going to be seeing in the bill coming in May. So every month we provide, not we provide, we include a insert in the utility bill. One side is the job openings in collaboration with our human resources department. So you'll see that there. Those are the jobs that are open, so go apply right now and join our team. And then the second one you'll see for this next month is our promotion for the Parks and Recreation Guide. Ally, I don't think that she held up the guide, but they're on the counter. It's very exciting. And so there you go. So we're promoting that in the utility bill insert as well. A couple more examples of print materials, flyers. You'll see there, Veterans Day Ceremony from last year. Then also below that, we have a banner example. Both of those are really good examples of collaboration with different organizations in the community. The American Canyon troop support is right here. So that's one of our partners that we worked with on that, that event and this communication. And then the banner is a thank you banner that was hung at the Magic of the Season event to thank our sponsors that helped out during that event. Also Housing Element Workshop, the Love Where You Live campaign, again, back to the heart, we love everything around here. The New Open Space Preserve Volunteer Event. And then finally, the annual police support, police deport, oh my gosh, the annual police department report. I can't take credit for the work that happens there, but I can take credit for helping to design it, so I'll put it on here. And then the State of the City, of course, is another example of an annual report that we produce. The annual reports, I wanted to mention are really great highlights of accomplishments going on in our community, what our community has to offer, those types of things. They're both published, all of our reports are published out on issue, which are shared on a bigger platform. So people that are looking at Napa or other areas around us can also see our stuff coming up. So that's kind of a great way to spread our messaging as well. In addition, all of our print materials are also shared through Pepe Smith's channels with public CEO and other various statewide agencies or publications that they also are connected into. Okay, so next we have videos. We are, Ally is our star of this year. So we are, we do videos and one of the videos that we put out this last year was a trail courtesy video, which was in response to concerns from community members of how people were treating each other out on the trails. So Ally went out on her bike and did a video to tell people how to be nice to each other and use our trails courteously. We also. So we also have Director Smithy's during the Devlin Road and Vine Trail Extension Project. We did regular Facebook Live updates of the project. Those were really well received and kind of funny at times out there in the field. And then also when we have ceremonies or events that we're able to livestream from, especially the Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies, it's important for people that aren't able to attend to still have the opportunity to see what's, what's happening there and participate in that way if they're not able to leave their home or be there that, at that time. So we also do those. And then our big highlight of 2022 was our recruitment video, join our team, which really focused on the broader, like here's who we are, what we offer and what it's like to be part of our team and this community. So that is, that was our, our highlight. That video, that video helped, sorry, that video helped achieve recruitment goals and we had more than 600 views in the first couple of months of it being online and we're continuing to push that video and do more marketing on that. Okay, so the social media citywide, we in the city have a city Facebook page, a Parks and Recreation Facebook page, the American Canyon Police Department has a Facebook page and then Parks and Rec and Police also have Instagram pages. And then the Fire District, which is a separate jurisdiction, also has Instagram and Facebook. And so I, we don't track the analytics for the Fire District because they have their own public information officer that does that and will probably be part of their annual report. But I did want to highlight them here because all of these, all of us work together as a collaborative team when we get to the urgent and emergency communication conversation. And we also cross-promote each other's messaging because we have a little bit different audiences. So sometimes if you're following all the pages, you're going to get really annoyed seeing the same thing three times. But for people that are not following another page, sometimes we get, we can extend our messaging and reach more people that way. So you'll see on the city, the city's Facebook page, our subscription base isn't all that impressive, I don't think. It's, but it's average for, for a public agency. But the intent of our Facebook page is really to, almost like a bulletin board to, to expand out the messaging and use that as a platform to, to push it out further. And then the Parks and Recreation Page, same kind of thought process, but then there's also some fun stuff that happens there. You know, like during an event, they might do a Facebook Live, like sharing, I don't know, the new sorrow dancing at 4th of July or something like that. So it's just a little bit different type of messaging that will happen on there. So their page is actually pretty new. We, I can't remember when we launched that page, but it's, it's a fairly newer page. So you'll see the followers there are a little bit lower, but Instagram is obviously double what they have on Facebook. On Facebook, I did want to mention that one of the tools that we do use in the city and all of these, all of these, these areas in the city, we all try to cross-promote onto American Canyon Happenings, which is where a lot of our community members are engaging with one another. And so we, I know the Fire District and the city, yeah, we all have joined it as members of that group, so we're able to share our messaging there too. It's hard to manage all of the conversations all over the place, so what we do on these platforms is push back to our website and our official sources of the information instead of, like you, you might see, we don't do a lot of back and forth dialoguing on there. We just don't, we don't, we can't. It would take all day, every day. So I did want to mention as well that the American Canyon Happenings page, last time I checked, was over 4,200 followers. So that's pretty, that's a pretty impressive audience that we're touching when we're sharing those items there. Also with Parks and Recreation, I wanted to mention part of the strategy that we're using in sharing their information, we have another part-time member of the staff that's going to be collaborating and joining the communications team. And that person is part-time based out of Parks and Recreation. So as a part of that work, we are, sorry, we're also posting messaging on these platforms as well as our email, but then they're also using Civic Rec to cross-promote to all of those sources. I mean audiences, I apologize. Okay, so a couple other social media platforms that we are on YouTube last year at our annual report. You shared some feedback that, about increasing our subscriptions on the YouTube channel, so we did a little bit of campaigning on that. We got another 76 or so users, but it's better than nothing, so we're going to continue working on that. As you know, the meetings are livestreamed there and we also showcase the other videos that we produce. And then also next door, as you're aware, the city's, the city's participation on that is limited, so, but there are 90% of households claimed on there, so it's where our audience is. So we share information there as well with disclaimers about our limitations. Here, I just want to share a couple of social media top engagements, really kind of all over the place, some city, city celebrations, putting humani- humanizing city staff to the community, highlighting our staff, which is nice to do when we can. The playground replacements, Ally joining the team was also another popular post on the city's Facebook. On the Parks and Rec Facebook, you can see some more of the same, 30th Anniversary Celebration, coming out and having fun, skateboard, skateboard park move. Then urgent incident and emergency tools, you'll see on the left side, the logo's there. That's the collaborators when there's an incident in our community. There's two types of incidents that we respond to. One is urgent, which is not life-threatening, but could obviously have an impact on you getting one place to another. So for those incidents, we provide the details that we know at the time and then we cross-share on all of the channels that I mentioned earlier and send emails to our subscribers. And at times, the American Canyon Police Department may initiate a NICSOL, which is now Alert Napa County, as you may have heard in this last week or two. Emergency incidents are, when an emergency happens here, it's going to usually collaborate in with Napa County, OES. And so same thing that we do with the other, the urgent incidents, but then you'll also maybe see the reverse 911, I pause, the highlight. But then you'll also maybe see the reverse 911, I pause, the high-low sirens alerts with the Sheriff's Office and Police Department. And then the most important thing that I want to share here is that in the case that you can't find anything out, the city will always post updates on the doors at City Hall and the Public Safety Building in writing. Okay, so 2022 Highlights, Construction and Project Updates was a collaboration with the Community Development and Public Works Team. This was just to really highlight, put into one place in an organized fashion, the projects going on around town so that ideally someone could look on the map and see what's happening around them. We also added, this is updated every week. And then also the Community Development Team added projects that are under review. And that's before it goes to the Planning Commission, offering opportunities for the public to provide comments and input through a form on those projects. And then you see there, the Happy 30th Anniversary, American Canyon and the National Community Survey was another highlight of the year earlier last year. So the other highlights we had for the year, obviously the Parks and Recreation Guide was a big deal. That was a great collaboration amongst the teams. The Save Our Water Campaign was a, countywide jurisdictions collaborated on that for this billboard that's out on 29 near South Kelly. And then the We Heart Safe Streets Campaign, which is a collaboration between the Fire, Police and Public Works. And then just in closing, I wanted to say that our team is looking forward to the rest of this year. We're focusing on the website redesign, as I mentioned earlier. Better marketing for the live, work and play. As a part of that, we're going to be advancing our recruitment video, the reach on that by boosting those posts. And then continuing the, the campaign on the YouTube, which will help promote that as well. Adding the lens of enhancing our story, as we talked about with the trajectory benefits in all of the initiatives that we're working on. And then we're also going to be scheduling a strategic planning session with the department heads to talk through planning the year and with that same lens on it so that we can streamline and maximize what we're doing. And then obviously continuing to use national observances, other opportunities to highlight city staff, council in action, other commissions, and then showcasing how the city is working for and with the community. And that's all I have for you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation. That's an incredible amount of work you're doing there.
Thank you.
And very valuable as well to the city. I was just remembering on the emergency side, managing public input. I think during the October 17 fires, we had to monitor Nextdoor a lot just to make sure people were getting the right information spread.
Right. Not sure if I mentioned it, but we monitor social, Nextdoor, all of those things every single day.
Yeah, so.
And we also count on our ambassadors to help us with that too.
Well, very good. No, I just, I really appreciate the, the expansion on where communication is going with the various segments of American Canyon. You know, certainly a lot of folks are commuters, they don't have a whole lot of time, but they can connect on the city webpage, find out what's happening, pay a bill, be aware of city meetings, essentially you can see the meetings are going up. Could be a benefit from having had Zoom forever and now people are wanting to be more connected, so. But thank you for the work.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Comment from council? Good job, thank you. Any public comment on the matter?
I just want to say I'm a big fan of Jen. And I think she does a great job of all the communication that she does and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bravo, thank you Jen. Okay, next on our agenda is Management Staff Oral Reports, item number 18.
Yes, thank you Mayor, we have Dominic Patrick from our Maintenance and Utilities Department. Give a presentation on water. Felix wanted to be here as well, he's, he's out ill and I told him to, to stay away with his coughing self and his mask and everything else, so.
Thank you for not sharing.
Dominic, more than capable of giving an update, so.
Been kind of a wet winter.
Kind of, kind of a wet winter.
Yeah. I think the, on the item, I think a lot of the concern now is how fast is that snow going to melt in the mountains?
Is it here? This is the speed one. Communications and the fee schedule.
The presentation is also on the.
Sorry, Mayor, the presentation is in the packet and I think we can kind of just go through that.
They are, they are getting the laptop and try to see if they can connect it if you'd like, but we can proceed however you prefer.
I think if we can just go through the paper copy right now, it's probably the easiest.
I, I actually like the deck and I think the public should see the deck because there's charts about water and stuff like that.
All right, yeah, we'll get it loaded.
Yeah. I mean, it's almost a celebration.
Maybe they could put some of that in the slides reservoir. Hang on for next year. There we go, very good.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, members of the public. My name is Dominic Patrick, Water Systems Manager. For the Water Division is the first time reporting in 2023. Therefore, 22 water supply and demand reports are included in our updates.
Can you just raise the podium up a little bit so you can get the microphone closer to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, great.
There's a button on the slide.
How's this, does that sound good?
Somebody go show you where the button.
How's that?
Much better.
Thank you, thank you very much. I also apologize for the delay. Carry on. Drought Emergency Stage 2 Potable Water Demand. For the year 2022, the city achieved 11% total potable water reduction compared to year 2020. Highlighted residential with a 15% reduction. Commercial with 3%. However, the city facilities 37% reduction. Overall, this was 11% reduction for the city, for the city of American Canyon. Year-to-date, data indicates water reduction is consistent with year 22. The city of American Canyon has reduced water supply and demand roughly 81 acre feet January through March 2023 as compared to January, March 2022. American Canyon Supply and Demand. American Canyon Supply in year 2022 was 2,477 acre feet. Water Supply in drought year 2020 was 2,609 acre feet. Reduction equivalent of 405 million gallons. On March 24th, the city of American Canyon received an 85% supply allocation from the California Department of Water Resources. American Canyon Supply will exceed the demand. State Water Project Water Supply 85% allocation is equivalent to 4,420 acre feet. Water Operations. Barker Slough Pump Station schedules annual maintenance and inspections. Staff uses this opportunity to practice its own annual inspections and maintenance by draining and inspecting and repairing on both water conventional treatment plant and water, water membrane plant. The Water Operations repaired and replaced valves from the North Bay Aqueduct to the American Canyon Water Treatment Plant. This was a preventive maintenance task due to the integrity of the valves, not to, due to any kind of failure. Repair and placed a pump up at Oak Hill Number 1 for our potable water tank mixer. Further stats. Our team responded to 221 service calls, identified and repaired 42 water meter leaks, replaced 13 water meters, replaced five services, and repaired two water mains. 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. The city's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan was certified by California Drinking Water Resources. This also included the City Municipal Code Water Conservation Plan, Chapter 13.14, the Reduced Delta Reliance, the Six Standards for Water Shortage Levels, and Supply and Demand Assessments, which you'll be receiving annually from here on out. The Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. The Water Division and the Finance Department work together assisting city customers. The city of American Canyon received $31,626, excuse me, $31,626 in these grant funds since the program started last year in August 2022. This year, roughly $11,000 in these grant funds through April. Staff Accomplishments. Maintenance Worker Doug Campbell received his water distribution grade one and also received a full-time employee, employment, excuse me. And Plant Operator Juan Garcia received a water distribution grade two certificate. Not in the slides. AquaTrax, which is our utility portal and our My User Portal, made a couple updates as well. You could add an account user. So a spouse or a facility manager could direct a supervisor to also be on that account and share the information for their water use. Receive bill, track bill. And that is all I have for the city council for the Water Division update. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Well, thank you for the report. Congratulations to our staff on their promotions, their awards they received. Well, we all know that the, for us, the drought's over. I think some of the, as I follow the news, the concern is about the 250% above normal snowfall. And when that snowpack starts melting, gonna be a great year for whitewater rafting, I think.
Yeah, that is correct. April 4th, 267% of average level of snowpack.
So I anticipate there's probably going to be some issues with flooding, depending on how it, how it melts. Any impact on American Canyon, you think, from that, from our water source?
Not directly, no.
Okay. Had an opportunity to have an informal lunch with Mayor McConnell of Filet Hill and Mayor Young of Benicia. Good part of the conversation was the repair of their water main. It's a 36-inch main. The hillside slid down, moved it 15 feet over an expanse of 700 feet. And it leaks, so now they have to repair it. I was just wondering, do we have any vulnerability with our water treatment plant or pipes that we know of?
Our, our pipes in the ground are, are good. Again, when we repaired and replaced the valves at the raw water to the treatment plants, that was due to a valve that wasn't operating correctly. So we replaced the valve and then we actually added a valve from the raw water line before the T. So that way we could isolate either plant and/or that line. So we took not only an advantage of adding a line, but we're also just performing our preventive maintenance task, which is ensuring that we prevent those, you know, the stratospheric failures.
That could be, yeah, I can understand what you're doing.
But as far as corrosion, movement from the ground, no, we haven't seen.
We don't have anything comparable to what's on Highway 680 there on the hillside.
No, not infrastructuralized.
Well, that's a relief. Good to know. But yeah, it's, they're in the process of installing some PVC bypass pipes to maintain water delivery. But everybody's on a mandatory 40% reduction because of that. So they have an alternate source coming in. It just says, you realize how critically important that is to the community and then it really comes home when you don't have it.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, it behooves us to take a look at what our exposure is in terms of areas like that. Thank you. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, well, thank you for the report. It's always good to get an update on our water situation. Couple of questions. There was the slide relating to the low-income water program, that one. And it got me thinking, a few years back, we talked about using some non-service revenues like interest earnings or penalties to offer discounts to seniors or low income. Are we still doing that or do we have any kind of track record on that?
That's a good question, Councilmember Joseph. We were talking about using the non-rate revenue as, as some of that assistance. We can go back and look at that. What, you know, what happened during the pandemic was kind of two folds. AB 998 kicked in, which drastically changed how utility shut-offs could occur in the first place. And then on the heels of the July or January 1 application, 998, the pandemic hit and the legislation occurred where no shut-offs could happen regardless of anything. And so coming along with that was a host of state funding for some of those unpaid bills. And so, and the funding referenced here is kind of a third phase, kind of a third tranche of that assistance. We received a couple of hundred thousand dollars in, in previous cycles. And so this was an add-on program that, that the team worked together to qualify for this money. So as far as, we'll go back and look at that. I don't want to give you an answer totally because I want to make sure that I have my facts straight.
Some of the follow-up to that is, is this program, because I think the other ones were kind of like addressing the arrearsages, which helped us out because we would have been on the hook.
Right, and that was for the COVID-19 pandemic.
Right, so, so my question is, do we have anything that helps people out saying, hey, you're paying your bill, but, you know, we want to reduce it?
I have a hunch Juan may have an answer for you.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a couple of programs that we had. We had a state water arrearsages program.
Right.
We also do have the use of penalties and interest that we currently receive. We do provide that subsidy for low income, correct, we currently do.
Are we getting a lot of takers for that? Do people know about it?
They do know about that. And really the only qualification to that is just submitting their PG&E bills. So if they're on their care, care credit, then we offer that discount as well, yeah.
Okay, perfect, well, thank you. And then the other question, which may be more of a policy issue that hasn't been resolved yet, is, is the recycled water home delivery program. I know I've talked to the city manager about it. Have you guys been thinking about how we want to approach it this year, given the fact that we have water?
I know, it's, it's a great question, it's a great point. We, we have been talking about it. I talked with Felix even earlier this week about it, or sorry, last week about it. At this point, we're leaning to not doing the delivery program. We are exploring vendors and sites for a new self-service station over on the east side, somewhere near Newell Drive. We haven't picked an exact location, so this would be an. in addition to the self-service site, station we have on the west side. And we're actually looking at potentially reconfiguring the one on the west side, so it doesn't require going into the courtyard and through the gate to make it a key card access, essentially 24/7, if you wanted to get it and have it being a more automated type system. And we have one on each side of town. And some of the thought process is this, clearly, we're out of the drought stage two, right? So we want to, it was a very successful program. We were able to demonstrate reductions citywide. We were able to show that that tool in our toolkit can work. But we also want to be thoughtful of when to apply that tool. And if we get into the place where we have successive 5% allocations in years and we no longer have carryover and are more strained in our water resources, we want to be able to go back to that tool. We don't know if we just continue this delivery program now in an 85% allocation year or even 100% allocation year, that that makes sense. There are certain aspects of that program, A, being, you know, it's a free delivery service. We hadn't thought through the cost recovery of that, you know, when we implemented. And secondarily, we are using fossil fuel vehicles to deliver water to people. And so we never looked at it through a sustainability lens. And, you know, we're hopeful, we're really talking about a bridge timeframe, right? The Site Reservoir is due to come online the early part of the 2030s. And with any luck and if things goes planned, we'd be looking at construction of that beginning in late '25. So with Site Reservoir coming online, that's a game changer for us as far as the amount of water resources that we have. So we're talking about a bridge period. So that's a long answer to your question. The short answer is we're not going to be doing the delivery program. We're going to have a self-service program on both sides of town. We still want people to use recycled water. It's far more cost-effective if people do that for themselves. But we want to have, we want to reserve that tool for when we really need it as opposed to doing it all the time.
Well, that makes sense. And the main thing is that recycled water is free for use. It's just, you've got to get your truck and your tank and do it. So it makes sense. When there isn't a drought, it's kind of hard to argue that we should spend a couple hundred grand a year for a delivery service, but it is available.
I'll say, free for use comes with an asterisk. We're in the process of studying all of our utility rates and we never ever actually have studied our recycled water rates. We actually don't have one. All of the contracts we have are negotiated. There will be a recycled water rate. It will be less than the potable water rate. So there will still be, you know, a cost savings to folks, but we won't be giving the recycled water rate for free after we do the utility rates.
Oh, well, then I got to get my truck out there and start hustling. Okay, thank you.
I think moving the intake from Barker Slough out to the Sacramento River.
Yeah.
That work in progress.
Yeah, that's the next generational project. You talk about Site Reservoir. We can't count our eggs yet on that project, but heavy momentum and heavy design going forward with Site Reservoir. The alternate intake does not have the same level of backing federally or state level at this point. So it's called the Alternate Intake Project. It would move the intake from the Barker Slough to the deepwater channel of Sacramento River, but a 45 mile an hour, 45 mile, 45 diameter pipeline, 45 miles with about 120 inch diameter pipeline. Three quarters of a billion dollars is sort of the estimate in that range right now. Tons of property acquisition. But more importantly is it doesn't have a backer, right? It doesn't have Prop 1 funding and a governor who wants the project and so forth. We are, and Islamic County Water Agency has really been doing the lion's share of the lifting on it and we're grateful for that. The, we've started to reimagine that project. There was a draft environmental document done. It's not certified yet. It's going to go through a recirculation process, reimagination. What we have found, not unlike the highway project, is that we need to really be thinking of these big projects in alignment with state goals, right? And the success now that we're, the breakthrough that we have on the highway project is we've been able to align with state goals and to move something forward. It's the same thing with that pipeline. We had been viewing it as the state's doing the twin tunnels project or now a single tunnel delta conveyance. This is going to be needed to mitigate for that. It's their problem. They should fix it, that kind of adversarial relationship with the state. But in fact, that project is going to have a host of ecological benefits. Barker Slough is a great ecology area. And so moving this project, really being couched as an environmental project and less about, you know, a supply product for an urban area and more about an ecological restoration project, maybe it's semantics, maybe not, but when you can align with the backers of really large state initiatives like the Department of Water Resources, you stand a much better chance of success. So the project's being reimagined through that lens. There will be a revised environmental document because, again, some of the data is all old and all that. But we still don't have a funding source for the project. We don't have a funding source to finish the design other than ratepayers, which we would be a small part, given all the players, but still a substantial piece of it. We are setting aside money in our rates for it, but it's a progress.
Realign it with, you know, something that's got more attention behind it.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Dominic.
Moving on to Mayor, anything further from the management staff oral reports?
I don't think we, oh, our, our Park and Rec Director Akita does. Park and Rec Director Akita has, I'm guessing, some updates for you of the exciting second half of April.
Oh, what?
Starting on Saturday, probably.
Yes, I am here as my bi-weekly to let you know everything that's happening here in American Canyon. So on April 19th, the American Canyon High School will be hosting their night out from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. On 4/20, there, we will be having a Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Property Owner Meeting for Lavenier at, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then this weekend, don't forget, it's Earth Day. So from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., we have our volunteer project. We are looking for volunteers to participate. And we are partnering with the ACCPF and other amazing partners to bring an amazing event down at the wetlands from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Please don't miss out. It's going to be a great event, a great way to learn about sustainability and climate action and how to protect our earth and our wetlands and our open spaces. And I'm super excited because they're going to, ACCPF is going to be bringing out their new Outdoor Education Connection Classroom, which I'm super excited about that. I just saw the pictures of it and I can't wait to play. Starting on Monday, April 27th is our first day of summer registration for American Canyon residents. It's going to go until May 7th. And on April 25th, there, the Napa County Library Memory Lab and Napa Valley Geological Society will be hosting a Making Memories Last, Preserving Family History at 6:00 p.m. That is a, by registration, you do need to register to participate. You can click on the community calendar to get to that link to register. And then on April 27th, we have another Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Property Owner Meeting at Vintage Ranch from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. That's all we had, Mayor.
Thank you. We want the Mayor Council Comments Committee reports and then after that, any future agenda items? Councilmember Joseph, anything further to add here?
No, I think I'm good for now, but I do have a list of future requests, so I'll lay low for now.
Okay. Councilmember Oral?
I don't have anything, but I will probably have some updates on my, on the next council meeting.
Okay. Vice Mayor Washington?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Well, see, several things has happened since the last meeting. I think it's, Councilmember Joseph and I attended the League of California Cities, Cities North Bay Division. It's hosted in the city of Sassoon. Seemed to be well-attended. A huge part of the conversation was housing elements and homelessness. And now everybody is struggling with both. And it seems the state has come up with the, with the one size fits all, which doesn't fit every community. We are fortunate here in American Canyon that we have the land to build on. And the issue of homelessness, well, it's not, other than our concerns with the Home Key Project in Vallejo ordering us. But these are very genuine issues throughout the whole Bay Area. And it comes, has come up at the A-Bag meeting as well. And that's the one that is 101 cities represented in all nine Bay Area counties. And that issue keeps coming back. So we will continue to work to resolve it. Councilmember Joseph and I were both at Spring Salute for the Working Families Central Labor Council. Wow, that was impressive. I mean, that's, the way that project is coming around is just really blowing people's minds. Actually, Terry McGrath stopped by briefly. I don't know if you had a chance to catch up with him. But he's all excited about it. And, you know, people can actually see all the housing stock that's being built there. The apartments and the single-family homes. And certainly a lot of excitement generated around that. I think the, when you kind of fill in the picture, you know, I'd ask Terry McGrath if he'd seen the Napa Register paper about the
Empatheter?
Empatheter proposal for that area. Well, 3,300 seats in one, 800 in another, and a 200-room hotel. This is going to be a huge moneymaker for American Canyon. It's really going to bring a lot of activity here. Plus the hotels, we have in line being built and being proposed. So it's going to be an event center to share with everyone in the area. It's certainly an opportunity for us as well. Given the the Easter holiday, you know, it's certainly something of a very important in Christian churches as well. So our church had a lot of celebrations, but I also got invited to the Vallejo mosque. My wife and I got invited for the Ramadan celebration. And then following that, we got an invitation to the, to have, for the Jewish Committee for Seder at the temple in Vallejo. Followed by that was an invitation for us to be at Visaki Mela for the Sikh community. It's just, it's a time of spiritual enlightenment, I think, and reflection for different communities all over. And it's just interesting to see how much it is so very similar, the values expressed and the heartfelt reception of having other communities join them with it. And Visaki Mela is a huge celebration with a lot of food, a lot of kids, and a lot of, unfortunately, don't have an adult jump house. I thought they should probably reflect that on it. But it was great to see how those all connect back to American Canyon as well. Something that Jen pointed out in her presentation as well, how diverse we are. And I think that would conclude my report. Thank you all. Future agenda items?
Well, I guess I'm the one. First of all, a couple of just updates. One is, I've been approached by some people about out at Clark Ranch, the dogs off-leash, so it's more a request to have staff or staff look into either better signage or better enforcement or something. So that's kind of brewing now that things are getting back to normal. And then secondly, I was remiss, I noticed in the newspaper that Caitlin Nesbit, who's our fourth grade teacher at Napa Junior or Napa Junction Elementary, was named the 2023 Napa County Teacher of the Year in Napa County. So again, another one of our locals do well. So I just wanted to do a little shout-out for her. But the three items that I'd like to have some, some action on. The first relates to the Gateway Award Program that's scheduled for the 29th. There's been some talk about some of the elements and it is the first time we've tried out this new format. There are some good parts about it and some parts that could probably be improved. So what I'd like to suggest is that after the event, we do a debriefing that includes the Gateway Award winners. I don't know if the full council needs to be included or the ad hoc of three years ago needs to be resurrected, but somehow get some feedback on what went well and what can do better. Because I think it's an important event. And I, and I like a lot of the parts that staff has re-envisioned. But again, there's good, there's bad, but we can always do better. And so I think a debriefing would be in order.
I think the briefing would be a good idea.
Thank you. The second one is a little more controversial. Where our Planning Commission is being asked to consider a drive-through project or a restaurant that has a drive-through. And it seems to me that there's getting to be a lot of push to basically modify some of the some of the conditions that are allowed in our zoning ordinance. And I think it's worth some discussion, but I kind of feel like a Circle K event is happening. That I think if a developer comes in and follows the rules as they're established and has staff support, if we're going to change, if we're going to say no because we want to shift the policy, it seems to me that ought to be a discussion that doesn't hold a project hostage, nor does it put our Planning Commission in the role of trying to second-guess what this council's policy is. So I, what I'm trying to come through is there needs to be some discussion at the council level, clearly for making direction, but at the lower levels with our Planning Commission, maybe our OSAT's Commission, certainly with staff and the public, so that we have a discussion about whether, you know, whether we want to hand or make any changes relative to idling. And in particular, you know, trucks at our industrial park, you know, if there are diesel truck idling for 10 or 20 minutes, does the greenhouse gas emissions from those trucks, do they exceed the the emissions coming from a restaurant drive-through? So that we begin to identify where is the problem? Or I'm just going on it more length than I need to. I think we need to have a discussion about that policy and apply it prospectively rather than retroactively on a developer who basically went through a process and it was, it was okay to do and suddenly saying maybe not. So if all of that made sense, I think we need to have some discussion probably before the chicken guy issue is resolved so that we're not putting the commission in the role of trying to second-guess what policy should be. And then the last one is really, City of St. Helena came up with an idea about discounting their permits for things that relate to, you know, replacing your water heater with an electric one or insulation or solar and so forth. Basically, the idea of saying, hey, we're going to knock the price in half to encourage people to do stuff. And it just sounds cool and, and I'd like to throw it out to this council to say, okay, maybe we should have staff look at that and see, you know, can we apply the, what I was going to say, plagiarism is the best form of flattery, whatever that saying is. But basically, I think St. Helena did a, had a great idea and I'd like to see if it's worth.
It was two-for-one, two-for-one electric water heater permits?
You know, that's something certainly to explore.
Yeah, it just, it struck me as a clever entrepreneurial way of trying to get people to do the right thing by offering them good old-fashioned deals.
Mark, you're, sorry, Councilmember Joseph, you're always very strong on incentives. So that would be a good one.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a, that's a fine idea, but I think, you know, based on your report and the presentation to the OSAT's committee, that's the work that they could do, an idea that they can come up. I'd rather come at this holistically rather than piecemeal, keeping those good ideas as part of a bigger package. I don't want to, you know, we've got a lot to tackle on this council. And if we continue to do like whack-a-mole on great ideas, I think we could package these up in a couple of months to where we can present it all at once. We may not capture anything, but I think it would be better expressed that way. Otherwise, we'll be spending agenda items that aren't, you know, aligned to things that we've asked the commission to do. And then on, on, on the idling, you know, I'm not going to get in debate on that. I'm happy to have that discussion. What I don't want to have, as you said, is a, is a, I want a prospective look at this.
Yeah.
Because issues do come up and that's how we tackle them. If we're going to go back and do retrospective stuff, it's not fair to anybody who's making an investment into this community.
Yeah, I agree. That's rewriting all, all the rules. Well, the game's in progress, I think. So I have some concerns with that as well.
Yeah. So on that, that, we'll take that second, the second item, the drive-through policy conversation. The city attorney has already prepared a communication to the Planning Commission that, I'm not going to do a bad job of paraphrasing you, Bill. It said something to the effect of, you know, notwithstanding the climate declaration the council made in February of '22, the zoning code didn't change. And so, you know, proceed with the zoning code as is written today. And, and, you know, the council will provide direction later as to what that 2022 resolution is to don't be confusing or conflating the two. So that communication has gone, and I know you can share a copy of that with the council. Prospectively, and so I think that might address the current, you know, applications, but prospectively, certainly, you know, looking at the policy. But if the council is, you know, and I'm sensitive to the Circle K issue, if the council does want to provide some formal direction to the Planning Commission, I mean, what they got was advice from the city attorney, legally factual. It wasn't political and it wasn't, you know, political. legally factual, it wasn't political and it wasn't, you know, policymaking. It was legal and factual. If, if the council says, hey, look, you know, we want to send that signal to the planning commission. We're sensitive to them maybe being a little unsure of how to do their job. We put them in that place and we don't want to put them, you know, in an awkward spot. If the council wants to do that, it's totally appropriate and we can arrange something that the schedule, that's going to be a little bit quickly because, because we're expecting a May planning commission for, for the Chicken Guy project. So either way, I think we have a path forward, but I'll leave it up to the council how you want to do that particular item. We can talk about the others in a moment.
Yeah, from my perspective, I would, my preference is the prospective angle, meaning if Chicken Guy came through and, and the rules where you can have a drive-through, you know, that ought to be the, the standard. But prospectively, it's worth a discussion. And, you know, I'm not sure which way we'll end up.
Yeah.
But I do think it should be something that we say from this point forward, these are the rules and then you follow the rules.
Well, we already got that. Yeah, I'm a little concerned that the planning commission is not being guided either by staff or hearing us from the city council or understanding their role as planning commissioners based on policies that are in place. If they want to come back to us, then as an advisory commission, they should be coming back to us. But, you know, you don't move the goalposts during this whole thing. What we learned last time on the gas station thing is that they, what they raised was true and worthy. And we did make a policy decision on that. And if the, you know, the planning commission is listening to this now, they, they shouldn't be trying to move the goalposts at this time. But they should be raising these concerns that are coming forward. They have the guidelines to make decisions and to work with, and that's why we put them in place. And with the staff council and the, and the legal council and the, and the planning department, they should be able to make a decision based on this along with public input. And the fact that it's coming up like this in a way to where it begins concerning, gives me pause in terms of, of their ability to make decisions on our behalf. It's an important commission. You know, they, they should not be afraid to make decisions on this front. The council has provided plenty of guidance on where we go. It's part of the Broadway District Pacific Plant, everything like that. And maybe, maybe it's a time for the, either the city manager or the planning direct, the community development director to go over, you know, what their powers are.
They have. I think it's, you know, and not unlike the council, they're, they're wanting to be responsive to public comment and they, they definitely see both sides of things. So I, I think what we can do is, is two things. First, we can send what I'm going to characterize as not more official, but we can send a follow-up communication through, through the lens of my office that basically says, you know, the city council has this perspective, right, on the current application, the current zoning code. It's the current standards that apply. So don't be confused by that. They are entertaining a prospective policy change. They're going to go through that debate. It would apply to other applications in the future. It wouldn't apply to the one that's already in-house. It would apply to future applications if they decide to actually do something, but it wouldn't be retrospective in any scenario. And so that they can kind of say, okay, when and if the council makes any changes, it'll apply prospectively. It doesn't apply now. And we can just get that clarity. And we, if the council's comfortable with that approach, we'll, that's how we'll communicate back to them. Not just the, the legal framework, but the policy and the political framework.
I think city attorney, Ross, is certainly, that's, this is the boundaries at which you can work in.
Yep. Yeah, so we can do that. And I, and again, we'll, we will set, you know, in, in, in the future, an actual policy conversation. It'll, it'll deal with the future ones, but we've, we're clear that the, the current application is the current rules and we're not, we wouldn't ever change that.
See, I'm, I'm in agreement that every time something comes up, what are we going to stop, stop everything and then go back and revisit this whole thing and then redefine everything time after time? Whack-a-mole's a good visual representation of that.
Yes.
I think, you know, it's certainly environmental issues. Climate change is real and that has an impact. But, you know, I think what, I'm in agreement with a more comprehensive, put all the pieces together, see where it impacts what we do. Go forward from there.
Yeah, and I think actually, I'll probably work with Brent as well and we'll have some offline conversations, maybe on a two-by-two basis with our planning commissioners and let them kind of hear it in an offline format too, rather than just a, you know, a formal memo. So they can hear, you know, we can have a little bit of that dialogue. So I'll do that with Brent.
Do you need anything from us tonight to?
No, I, we, you know, we, this is clarity. I think we had it, but this is capital C clarity. So I appreciate it. And we have what we need to move forward on this. And if we're comfortable with the approach, we'll do that.
Thank you.
As it, as it waits to the, the permit fee waiver stuff, I agree, it's an interesting idea. And St. Helena, I'll talk with Anil and see how, how the program went for them. I, I think we can, I think we can safely put this along with maybe a bundle of other good ideas that OSAT's maybe coming up with. I know the theme was, was small, you know, sort of low-hanging fruit things you could do. And so we'll, that's our initial focus with them on sustainability is where is this, this list of, of things that are low-hanging fruit? Council happens to have, you know, populated that list with at least one idea that may be useful because we know about what St. Helena's doing. Let them kind of work on that and we'll bring back, you know, rather than just an individual idea, an individual idea. We bring back kind of a suite of low-hanging fruit. And that's unsurprising will probably be one of the, one of the things that we bring forward. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't see a council item on this until it's part of a package that OSAT has, has worked on.
Excellent. Thank you.
And as far as the debriefing on Gateway, yeah, we're, I think it's a great idea. We'll, we'll sit down and figure out how it went and talk with folks and we'll, we'll see where that conversation goes.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other council members for future agenda items? All right. Okay. Well, council, it's been a very productive evening. We have concluded our work. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, American Canyon.